...to order, can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second, second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any walk-ins this evening? Seeing that, we'll move on to the report of the town administrator, Tricia.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on events that have happened and some notifications that we've gotten over the past few days. We had a very successful truck day here at the DPW. It grows bigger and better every year, I think, and congratulations to the DPW. The kids really seem to enjoy it, and I think it's a great tradition that we have going on in town now. We also had a number of folks show up to attend the sunrise service for those who have been lost due to opioid addiction, and I want to thank Barbara and Anne Marie Galvin for putting that together. A few other things, the hoarding task force just was notified today that they got a $3,000 grant from the state to continue their hoarding activities. This is the third year in a row that we've gotten a hoarding grant, and the highest amount yet. So, congratulations to Jennifer Keefe and Laura Minier and all the people who serve on our hoarding task force. It's just another thing, I think, that the town's sort of out of, ahead of most other communities as far as being a model, that other towns are coming to us and attending our meetings to see how it's done. So I wanted to commend them. Nancy's, and the Nancy staff, and the payroll staff, and a lot of support staff are busy with munis training. As you know, we've converting our entire payroll system, general ledger, to our new software system. It's a Herculean task, and Nancy, in addition to her regular duties, has been in day-long meetings, two, three days a week, training staff on it, and this will be ongoing for the next several months. So I just want the board to be aware that it's a huge, huge project, very important for the town, and one that, you know, we want to be successful. State primary, so on Thursday, so please remember that, and the polls will be open. And finally, I'm very happy to announce, just fresh off the emails, is that in response to our inquiries for a potential twinning relationship with Ireland, the entire county of Cork has indicated that they wish to pursue a sister city, sister county relationship. We, Michelle, heard from the county executive today. They had already discussed it in council at the invitation of the Irish consulate in Boston when we met with them a few months ago. So they have the mayor and the county executive visiting later this year, and we hope to have them come here as part of their visit and to finalize arrangements. So I got that email literally about 20 minutes ago, so you were the very first to know. So I'm happy to report that. And I'm going to keep my remarks brief because I really want to turn the meeting over about the water shortage update, and then if we could come back, Marty, to the items pending that I included in your packet, so we can talk about some of the other stuff going on. So right now, I'd like to invite up Al Bangert, the special projects coordinator, who I've tasked with sort of coordinating, no pun intended, all this work, along with Sean Anderson, our water superintendent, and Kevin Cafferty, our DPW director.
Good evening.
How are you?
How are you?
Okay.
Happy to be here. Here's the problem. This is the driest and probably the hottest summer on record in southeast Massachusetts. The problem statement is our water supply has not been able to keep up with the demand or the usage, even though you implemented severe restrictions on the use of irrigation systems several years ago to limit them to one day a week, and then all summer long you implemented increasingly severe implement, uh, irrigate, uh, restrictions on outside use of water. So through restrictions attempting to drop down demand, nonetheless, the reservoir dropped to 22% of full, something that hasn't happened in our recorded history, probably since the time when it was originally filled. No rain is currently forecasted. Meteorologist Tim Kelly, who is on the task force, I'll talk about in a minute, says that this is one of the strangest weather patterns he's seen. The tropical storm came up and left the, less than a quarter of inch of rain on the Cape, less than, and less than that here, about a third of an inch here. He calls it a donut hole. There's a donut hole over southeast Massachusetts and shows it on the radar as when the weather comes, it kind of splits and goes around us. So the town administrator set up a drought crisis management team several weeks ago, similar to the way she would set up a team if we were having blizzard conditions in the winter, to fight the snow, keep people safe. Same thing, she set up this team to accelerate the response in these extraordinary circumstances. And several things have happened now to bring the water supply and demand into balance. So we're in, we're in actually a pretty good shape now for really about two reasons. And one is, the water division refurbished that well 17A, which is off Tac Factory Pond, and more than doubled its output. That brought that well up to where it can produce enough that with the resident, the second big step being, the residents have really stepped up their conservation efforts. They take it very seriously. Water use has dropped in August from 1.6 million gallons a day for the first week of August to 1.2 million gallons a day in the last week of August. In other words, a 25% reduction. As a result, the town is now able to source all of our water needs from our five wells. We're not using the reservoir at all, and it's holding steady. It's holding steady at 22% or so full. A little bit of rain adds to it, then you get some evaporation, so it's, but it's kind of holding steady, and we are not using any of that water whatsoever. It's being held in reserve. The next big event that's going to help the town of Situate has occurred this weekend, of course. Now, the summer population and the demand that comes with that for water uses will decline throughout the month of September. Yes, there'll be some bumps in the weekends, but generally, we'll see a population reduction. The weather will cool off a bit, less demand for showers and that sort of thing. So we're into the time period where it's kind of a glide slope of reducing usage or demand and a healthy supply from, coming from our wells.
Al, just generally during the, are you looking back like a few years back to see what the pattern is, I assume, in order to make that?
Well, what has happened in the past with the pattern is that as of September, people can begin sprinkling again. But we'll, of course, keep that water ban in place, so we won't have people leaving and lawns being turned down. I mean, September is the ideal time for putting in new lawn.
What I'm telling you is, in other words, can you see that by, based upon numbers, that, well, you know, as the summer residents leave, that you're able to see a pattern of, say, per day, you know, 50,000 gallons or 40,000 gallons are now available as opposed to, you know, when, when they haven't left as of September?
Yeah. Typically, there is that pattern. I don't have that number available to you right now, what that number is, but there's a, you can see, you know, in the old days, you could always see the drop, and then you'd see the spikes from sprinklers.
Yeah.
It drops below a million, though, doesn't it? Isn't it like about 800,000 or something?
For the usage, I'd, I'd have to check for sure.
I thought we looked at it the other day.
We may have.
The base usage you're saying is about 800,000. That's, that's more like the winter time usage, I think. But I mean, we won't get there yet.
The difference between basically summer going into the first of October, I think it's about, because we're about, we're, like you said, what, 1.6?
We were at 1.6 early, we're now at 1.2.
Right.
1.1, 1.2, then we might drop down 900, but we'll continue to supply from the wells. The treatment plant runs, by the way, but it's running well water. It's cleaning up water from well number 17A. So, but it's not, the, the key event is not opening the gate, uh, gate valve at the reservoir and causing the reservoir to flow into the Old Oak and Bucket Pond and then pull out of the pond, okay?
Can a well run out of water?
A well has never run out of water. It could run out of water, I guess.
Haven't been, just recently redeveloped, it's in pretty good shape.
Yep.
So on the wells, just to, just to step in a little bit, there are sensors where they check what the groundwater is around them in the corner of influence of the well to see how much it's taking out. It's always possible for a well to run out of water, but you don't always run it at full capacity. You might fluctuate on how, how you run the well, so that you don't drain it.
So how do those, how do those measurements look today for all, all of the wells that we're pulling water from?
They actually look, considering the drought we're in, they look pretty good.
So is there any way we can get on a regular basis, come at some of these statistics? I know you're putting some stuff on our Facebook page, but well, well usage and wherever that level happens to be, and the usage?
Yeah.
Because I think people like seeing whether their, their efforts are positive or negative.
It'd be curious to see after the population does drop this week, what our average daily usage would be coming up.
Start publishing what the usage is.
Coming up to Saturday.
Yep, sure. We can do that.
I mean, I don't want people to be encouraged to the point where they're going to think they can water their lawn, but at least we have an idea of what's being used, you know?
Yeah, will do. Okay? I want to review with you a number of contingency measures that have been put into place, so it's not like, oh, we're happy and everything is done and let's, let's go home now, okay? So some of the measures that have been put in place is that a water connection has been established with the Cohasset system, physically connected, meter in place, gate valves in place, ready to go. It's not left up because it is, could be vulnerable. So what has happened is the, the DPW has taken that system down. You want to pass these around, it's pretty helpful. So, and Tricia has been working with the town administrator over there, town manager there, to establish the memorandum of understanding and how it's going to work and all that stuff. So we are, we're ready to go if the reservoir drops to certain trigger levels to put into effect the connection with Cohasset.
Right, and I just want to interject, since I just got indication that the water commissioners in Situate have, I mean, in Cohasset have agreed to give us water if we reach 10%. And we set up those connections and ran a test, which you're going to talk about, I assume.
Yep.
So what's the threshold that you would tap into that?
At 10, at 15%, we'd, we'd run a wet test. We've run a dry test.
10% of the reservoir?
At 15% of the reservoir, we'd run a wet test. At 10%, we would begin flowing water. The fire chief has set up arrangements to bring in water tankers with the Forest Service down in Plymouth and with MIMA, who are organizing all of that. So he's working with them, we're considering even, he's working with them to see if we could actually place a water tanker that was used by the mutual aid towns right here within the Cohasset Norwell Situate area. He's comfortable at this point that he has water tankers available to them if an extraordinary fire develops, he can call up and they can be here and be on hand. He's also worked on arrangements for if he has a coastal fire, where he could draw water from the seas, okay? The water pipe replacement work project has been modified to reduce the amount of water that it uses. You know, when you put a pipe in, you have to do extensive flushing and chlorinating and then flushing again. That's, that's, that work, that portion of the project will be delayed till later. The police and water personnel have stepped up enforcement of the ban on irrigation, issuing fines. We're actually not publishing exact addresses, but we are publishing the fact that violators were found on specific streets to give some encouragement to the neighbors, and in fact, the town is doing something when they know that their darn neighbor down the street is watering the lawn, apparently without any kind of penalty. Small measures, but visible. Restaurants have agreed to offer water to customers only when they request it. The harbor master has installed water conservation devices in his, in the showers area, in the bathroom area, and is vigorously enforcing the no washing of your boats with fresh town water rule. And then there's been an extensive outreach program to help the public stay informed and understand what the problem is and what's being done to, to begin to work on it, and, and to offer advice to them on how they can conserve water. And, and a hotline email was set up so that they could also offer their advice, their ideas on how to conserve water, and a number of those have been passed along through the, basically, daily updates that Tricia and others are publishing. And lastly, there's several steps underway to improve the long-term resiliency of our systems. One is a project that we've had underway for the last two years through grants that we've received, the last two years, over the last three or four years, grants we've received from the DEP. This one is specifically to look at increasing the height of the reservoir by 18 inches. This is a project that was begun as a part of improving stream flow and providing more water for the town. This is a project that will, when it's put into effect, will give us another 28 days supply in the reservoir, make it 28 days bigger, if you will, okay? It would change the, the trigger points for bans or leave the trigger points in place and leave us with a little more space to start with before we get to this level of low water.
Do you think we could do that by next summer? I'm sorry. Think that could be done by next summer?
No, I don't.
And that's only contingent upon rainfall?
The permitting process is fairly, the permitting, the permitting process is, is fairly arduous. But the, the grant is coming from the, we applied for a grant this year again, and it's, the special town meeting will have on the warrant, an article for our matching portion of the grant, and this will be the grant to take it from the 30% design to the 60% design and permitting phase. Once the permitting is done, then we can go to the 90% design and then construction. It's probably, Sean, a two-year project. And what we do, what it does is basically, the water that flows over the reservoir all spring long would be saved, and then it would be available to us. The increase in height is a removable weir, a removable dam stop, which in the event of severe flooding situations anticipated, then the, the, that could be dropped to allow the water to go over.
I just think it's important. You just said, once this is done, that gives us another month.
Yeah.
It's important.
Right.
So any chance on the DEP being a little bit more cooperative in the permitting process to speed it up?
Yes.
So we don't have to wait two years to get this done, due to the situation that we're in?
It would be nice if we could have it in place for the winter of '18. But that's, what we're targeting for more is to get to where in the spring we could appropriate the money for construction. So this, this level of funding that we're going after, it's a $144,000 of, of which we will need to pay about $36,000 as our match, will provide us the amount of engineering work to know what it is going to cost to do this project, so that we could then potentially, in this capital planning cycle, appropriate the funds in the spring.
Okay.
Okay? In anticipation of all the permits being completed.
So, so it's a public water drinking supply, as you know, and there's also all the wildlife to make sure there's not some turtle or newt in there, whatever. It will raise the reservoir 18 inches. It's going to cost a million dollars. So, you know, we're talking about design and engineering 30, 60, 90%. The permitting is the most time-consuming piece, and it'll cost a million dollars as a capital project that has not previously been on our capital plan, so it would bump other things. And to do it aggressively provided the permitting piece goes quickly. That's where we fall down. Senator O'Connor called me today and asked if he could do anything to help, and the one thing I said to him was that, you know, DEP is dealing with the drought through, you know, hundreds of communities right now, but we've been trying to do a lot of proactive things to prevent as late as possible as for the reservoir to get to 10%. And yet, once we hit 10%, a whole world of other things open up to us. And, you know, I said to him, it'd be nice if, you know, we don't have to meet the crisis and we could do stuff more to forestall it, such as connecting to Marshfield and other things like that. But this is one opportunity where, you know, working with DEP in the permitting process to get the permits approved would save us as much time as possible. That's, that's where we fall down, is when outside regulatory review has to step in. Thank you.
And then...
Go ahead, I'll wait till the end.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'll let you finish.
Okay, thank you. Then the, the, the second project we're working on that has real potential to improve our long-term sustainability is to develop the Dolan Well Site, which is off a countryway between Hollitt and Captain Pierce. This was a well site where, where the land was acquired in the early eighties, a floral well. Test wells were drilled in the mid-eighties. The water quantity and quality was very good, and in a matter of fact, a DEP permit was issued for the wells. In the mid-two thousands with MBTA money, the plan was to go ahead and develop that well site. But the conditions at the time, the board at the time decided that they would pursue another alternative, which was the, the Cranberry Box area off of Old Oak and Bucket. Remember, a lot of money was spent drilling holes up there to find out that in fact it was not a, an aquifer, it was filled with a lot of stones, and it wasn't really a very good development site. And then it kind of, other, attention was paid to other things. So now we have the opportunity to go back and develop the Dolan Well Site. It, it too will be an expensive project. It was, it looks like a well comparable to our other wells, could be between 200 and 400,000 gallons a day, which is a very good-sized well with good quality. It's in a different portion of the aquifer than all of our other wells. It's kind of on the other side where water is going towards the Gulf as opposed to water going towards the Herring River. And it's a, probably a three-year project, but nonetheless, it's necessary for us to be working on these things now to meet the future demands, and we got caught short a little bit this year with this drought situation, which we'd have done, and I'm sure, back in the mid-two thousands. So that is the update. The task force consists of the water department, the water resource committee, Tim Kelly, meteorologist, police chief, fire chief, health department, town administrator, and whoever else we can grab at the time for subject matters that are important. And the primary purpose is to coordinate activities so that there's a lot going on and everybody knows what all the pieces are, so if you're working on this piece over here, you know how that influences that piece there. And that's the purpose, purpose of having a management team do that.
So a couple things. Is Cohasset on water restrictions right now?
No.
They're not?
Oh, September 1st. Sorry. It's, I keep forgetting it's September.
They have plenty of water?
Yes.
And do you know what they're going to charge us for the water? I mean, that's one thing we've got to take into consideration, we're going to have to pay for it.
Yeah, right. That has to be worked out between town administrators.
Okay.
There's a meter on the pipes that we've established.
So Marshfield used to charge us the residential rate, and then 10 years ago, they increased it to the commercial rate. So hopefully they'll, Cohasset will be kind and give us the lower rate.
Those discussions will take place when they need to.
How many tickets are we giving out violators?
Last week, they gave out five tickets, five violators. This week, there were two, one of which got an advisory.
Altogether, there's been about 100.
100, great. And then you talked about the purchase, or the, the cost of developing the land, and a lot of you guys know this, but a million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but to purchase the land that we were talking about to get another water source exceeded that tremendously. So like you said, we did a ton of hundreds of thousands of dollars for the drilling on properties that we never proceeded with.
Right.
So, you know, so apples to apples, a million dollars may not be...
Right.
...as big as you thought. And then also, what's a realistic time period to get, and, because we don't want you guys to do work just for the sake of doing work, but to get levels, like we talked about, levels of the wells, levels of the usage, like what sort of regular time period can we expect to get that information and get out to the public? Is it daily? Is it three times a week? Is it?
It's recorded daily, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning, that it's really just a matter of the data's available. Sometimes you don't want to flood people with...
Right.
...too much data.
Two or three times a week, is that?
Well, we have all the data. Sean has, at our meeting today, Sean gave us 20 pages. None of them is understandable for a layperson. So what you're asking is to take the data, have someone translate it into an understandable format, and then put it up.
Yes.
I mean, we're posting stuff every single day, but to take that data and have someone translate it, I think maybe once a week at most.
Just the basic, you know, just usage, really.
Yeah. Yeah, once a week at least, is my, my thought.
I would think like towards the end of the week, prior to the weekend, and then do the same thing the following week.
We could do it, typically, the, this group is meeting on Tuesdays and about Wednesday, putting out the summary of the notes and where, where things stand. That'd be the time to publish that.
Two or three data points.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking a lot, which is...
Yeah, we could put a little chart together, a little chart that we put in the notes each week, and that could show last week, a couple different data points of water usage and reservoir level and rain. Might be the three things people want to know about.
Yeah.
I know my wife's asking about the rain all the time.
So a couple that we, we had a nice little sheet that gave tips on how people can conserve water. I know there's a little bit of confusion because one of the tips said not to, what was the wording? Not to hold water, so that it didn't get back into the aquifer. So I think what was meant by that is, is to kind of hoard water. That's not, what you want to do is you want you to capture it somehow. I know people are taking showers or letting their showers warm up and getting water and then throwing it on their garden. All that activity is what you want.
Exactly.
I guess the note of that was, don't fill up your swimming pool to the top to hold it for the, you know...
Right.
...ending do. Is that correct?
Okay, we'll try to make that clear.
Like rain, when you have those rain buckets under your gutter?
Yeah.
Those are all things that are...
Absolutely.
You want people to...
Right. As a matter of fact, that makes me think of something the transfer station is, is pursuing through the state, rain barrels. Remember, we had a rain barrel program a few years ago, the big blue rain barrels? I have one at the back of my truck. Yeah, so you can, I think we're going to be able to get a bunch of those and sell them at cost at the, through, probably sell them through an email process, and then you can pick them up at the transfer station just to avoid too much clutter there.
When will that be available?
That would be, I, what did you hear from the state on that?
It's a two-week lead time. We have to set up an online purchase program for it.
And right now, I mean, with no rain, it's kind of a joke to have a rain barrel, but nonetheless, it's a good thing to have. And, you know, it's when people, it's in times like this, people think of things like rain barrels and, you know, not running the shower all down the drain while the water warms up, but just put a bucket there and then use that for watering your plants or flushing your toilet or whatever you want to do with it.
Al, you and I talked the other day, and some, some things you had mentioned, you brought up a few things, and you and I added a couple of things to them. Is that something you were going to talk about tonight at all? Like maybe some things that would, might be available to people, like the, to replace a flapper on a toilet, to maybe go with those little inexpensive super saver water heads?
Yeah, we did talk that. We talked that in the meeting today, and then we made some reference to it in the notes that'll be out tomorrow. The water department has a, a large supply of the little blue water tablets. They have a small supply of energy-saving, water-saving shower heads and water-saving faucet...
Diffusers.
...erators.
Erators.
And what they're going to do with those is, they're going to take a supply and, and put a presentation on down at the, at the council and aging with one of their teammates, talking about how do you install these things, instructions on how to use them, how to use the tablets to, to look for water problems. And then that, we'll also notice, note that the tablets are available for people through the water department offices. Now, one of the things we could, we could be looking into is making available flappers or discounts on flappers, or just having them at cost so that people can grab them easily.
Right, okay.
The little flap on the, in the toilet bowl.
Yeah, it costs a lot of water.
Yep.
Can you go first?
Mara?
First of all, thank you for everything that you're doing. I had a question for more long-term, just not knowing what the position in Massachusetts is with the DEP for water reuse, and really looking at that for a long-term solution, because we're constantly looking at pulling more water out of our aquifer, right? So as droughts go in, you don't think your aquifer gets replenished as well either, eventually? Because we don't know how long this is going to last, right? It could be three months, it could be three years. I'm obviously hoping that's not the case. But in a number of different areas, I've just been doing some research, that water reuse is becoming a pretty, I know it's expensive, but a popular option. So I know it's not, they're probably the charge of your task force today, we're, we're dealing with today's issue, but long-term, you know, how can we start taking a look at something like that? It's different than just digging a well and digging the reservoir larger. You know, we're really actually...
Yeah, it's a, it's a very interesting topic. The sewer system, sewers actually are dewatering the aquifer, because we take the water out, sell it to a person, they run it through their system, it goes into the sewer, and then it goes out to sea, as opposed to septic systems, Title V septic systems, properly treat it, and it goes back into the aquifer. So that's a, that's a problem. There's, there are, there's, there's a school of thought around reusing the outflow from the sewer plant, which is not quite potable, but is extremely very clean water in terms of it's been, what do you call that, radiated, or, yeah?
UV light?
Yeah, UV, UV'd to kill everything in it. That, that gray water, although it's not, not gray looking at all, is, is a potential large volume of water to reuse. We looked at one point at using that water and reinjecting it into the aquifer, basically making the sewer plant instead of being an outflow, being similar to a septic system, taking the water and putting it back into the soil. So... So that's a potential project. We ran into some regulatory issues with that. We also looked at using that water to go to the golf courses. We ran into regulatory issues around that. So the regulatory environment needs to be continually developed and worked so that those are, become more and more usable. I know in Florida, in Fort Lauderdale, for instance, they have an entire, they have the water system, water pipes in the ground, and then they have the gray water pipes in the ground, you know? So you have two supplies of water coming by you. Now, I don't know if residents use the gray water. It's probably more like the large hotels will use it for their air conditioning systems and maybe toilet flushing systems because they can afford to put in dual water systems in their buildings. Homes generally can't. But those are regulatory issues that, that movement can happen, just probably doesn't get initiated down here.
Well, maybe our Water Resources Commission can start looking at some of that stuff, Kevin, you know, to support you.
We approached the DEP on that, too, and went over that. One of the concerns with the DEP is the treatment process that we have in our plant. They would want another treatment plant, another treatment process to make sure all the bacteria was removed beyond what we were doing because what they're afraid of is if there was any potential for bacteria in that, that it could dry up and then potentially get on, get on a person and cause, you know, cause some sickness. So that was a concern we had with the DEP because we were looking at it at the, at the golf courses and see where we could use it and try to put into place.
Good to know.
Just in only observations, thanks for the presentation, Sean, Alan, and Kevin. It's imperative that we are able to get the information out, and I know that sometimes it seems like causing more work, but it's, it's important for the public to know what's going on, given the crisis. And I think being able to provide that information at least once a week is the least we can do, and I agree with Tony. And I think, you know, right now, looking at the situation, trying to begin to look at short-term, midterm, and potentially long-term needs is what we as a board and a town need to do, just given the situation right now. The one thing I was curious about, and this is something I might like to charge with the Water Resource Committee, is to begin to maybe take a look at up gradient, begin to say, is there an opportunity for another location for another reservoir to be able to create linkage between the two? We have all that open space that we purchased specifically for our aquifer and for the water. And I think, given all that acreage in the West End, I think it's incumbent upon us to see if there's an ability to maybe create yet again, maybe a second reservoir. One of the things that's interesting about Cohasset is theirs are similar, they're in the West End, it's obviously more north than where ours is presently, and they're able to have a much deeper, given their location, reservoir than we have. So I'd be curious to see what the Water Resources could do to take a look at some of the lands in the West End to see if maybe we have a second opportunity, in addition to the Dolan Well, in addition to maybe dredging and digging deeper or building up the present reservoir as a further long-term goal and maybe need. I think these others are more realistic that we can get done in the short term, but I'd like to see that with Water Resources. Thank you.
Sean?
Another opportunity is to pump the output of the wastewater treatment plant to the head end of a, what is a natural water treatment process, which is the, the stream's way upstream. You know, we're putting it into a stream now that goes to the ocean. We could put it, but it's.
We brought that up with the DEP. They weren't too excited about putting wastewater towards the water system.
Sean?
Just real quick, I thought John was going to touch on it. Does anyone remember, you know, all the land we bought in the West End through CPC? Does anyone recall why? One of the, one of the pros to buying all that land was to protect Cohasset's drinking water. So remember that when you're negotiating with them? I do remember that.
Oh, that's right.
To protect their water.
They paid a little bit. Was that property called?
They chipped in a little bit, didn't they?
Yeah, on one of, on one of the purchases, but. How much land have we bought up there? And is it proven that it all goes that way? And secondly, the Dolan Well, I just don't want people to think we just dropped it. I thought it was too close to the right of way, so we talked about directional drilling, if I'm not mistaken. Paul Reedy was talking about that.
Yeah, I think, I think what was happening there was that the, there was a very aggressive move to look at the, that property off of Old Oak and Bucket because it did have water on it, and there was a lot of discussion about it was to be a very good aquifer. And so I think maybe where, if anything, we could have been more aggressive was after that didn't work out, to go back to the Dolan Well. And I think it just got caught up in other priorities, and, you know, I was part of that too at the time, and we just didn't pursue go back to the Dolan Well.
And it rained a lot, and there was plenty of water, and.
Yeah, right, right. Exactly. Got a lot of snow.
Right, right. Exactly. Anybody else?
It's going to snow in here in a minute.
Thank you very much.
Turn that down a little.
Tricia, did you want to go back to something?
If the board wants to review the pending items, I'd prepare.
Sean?
Pending items, do you want to go through them?
I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
The intent was really to lay out the volume of work that we're trying to handle right now.
The only other question I have, the Clapp Road, I know there's a bunch of field committees that are getting together now, I know we delineated the land out there.
Yeah, I think Patrick's working on that to have someone get out and survey the wetlands.
Okay. So the sooner people are talking about what the land could be, so soon as there's some sort of.
Yeah, that's not a bolded item. It could be a bolded item. I indicated on that, the amount of things that are behind now, but, but I'll check with Pat. I know, we talked about it at least last month, I think, so I can check with him.
You good? Okay, we're going to move on to interviews of some new board and committee applicants. The first one is for the Public Building Commission, Larry Gilmet. Come on up, Larry, how you doing?
Good. Good evening.
Good evening. So tell us a little bit about, I mean, I looked at your background, your resume, but tell us a little bit about why you, why you'd like to do this.
Well, I think it's a continuation of some of the work I started with the Alternative Building Reuse Committee.
Right.
And if you look at my resume, I've had 30, 35 years of a variety of real estate tasks, everything from development to operations to environmental issues, and I think I can probably have an alternative voice or a different voice on the committee. And projects that have been small to things the size of things that you're taking on now and bigger, you know, million, million and a half square foot projects down to 20,000 square foot rehabs.
Any questions?
Just a, just a comment, and, you know, first of all, thank you for stepping up to the plate. This is a committee that 10 years ago, they met every six months, and now Tricia meets every other Tuesday night when she's not here with myself.
I've seen the schedule.
So it's, you know, it's important, very important.
And you ready for that commitment?
I am. Okay. Yeah, I have.
Larry did a great job. You did a great job on the adaptive reuse, as did the other board members.
Thanks. It's my, my understanding, you're going out for some appraisals on the values of the property, so I'd be interested to see how they come in.
How they pan out.
See how our pro bono consultants range in with the, with the real appraiser.
But what I like about it is that, you know, you got involved with the adaptive reuse, and you could see your towns being utilized, you know, for other town committees, and that's always important because, you know, you're only good at the sum of your parts. And, you know, you're cooperative, you're helpful, insightful, pensive, and, you know, I heard nothing but good things, so.
Great, thank you.
I think it's, I'm very happy that you decided to do just that.
Actually, one of the members lives across the street from me, and he asked me about it a couple of months ago, and I said, I didn't want to get involved in another one until we kind of finished up the business on the Alternative Building Reuse Committees, but this has come up, and I have the time to do it.
Good. Well, thank you. We're going to be voting on these later on tonight.
Okay, great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Commission on Disabilities, Michelle Murphy. How are you, Michelle?
Good, thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you for taking your time.
Certainly. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your interest. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, your interests, I mean.
Basically, my background is I'm dual-licensed in the state. I'm a registered nurse and a Realtor, and I've been a registered nurse for 20 years, and my specialty's been working in accessibility and with people with disabilities. I'm also a parent of a young adult who's disabled, so I think I'd be a great asset to the Commission on Disabilities. And I also spoke with John McLaughlin in length over the phone, and with the meetings being once a month, I would definitely be able to make that commitment.
Great. I know, Michelle, it should be great addition to the committee, great insight, great perspective on stuff, and obviously, your background is a huge plus. So it's a great committee. They do a lot of wonderful things for the town, and you'd be a great addition to it.
And there are things that need to be looked at, you know, from a town perspective that we need to be cognizant of, and I think, you know, it's not a, you know, there's some committees that a lot of people say, I want on, I want on, and we'll end up with a lot of applications, but I have to say, I'm glad you are applying for it because it's necessary, it's important, and as a town going forward, we need to be aware and make sure that we are accessible. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and I basically told John, you know, John McLaughlin, I can do, you know, what, they can put me in whatever direction they want, and obviously, I'm very familiar with, you know, working and advocating for people with disabilities, and I'd love to serve the town in that capacity.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Still three more positions on there.
Yeah. Do they have enough for a quorum?
They do, but, you know, there's still openings, which is good.
Next, we have the Water Resources Commission. I'm going to try, John.
Benke.
Benke. Come on up, John. Tell us a little bit about yourself. I didn't really see a lot of background unless I missed.
Didn't give you a lot of background. I'm not familiar with the process, so I just thought I'd start it.
Okay, no problem. So just tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest in water resources.
Well, my, my interest in water resources, I mean, it's not hard to figure out that it's probably the biggest problem facing the town right now.
Right.
And I've, you know, my kids are grown and out of the house, and I thought it was time to give back to the community. So I read through the list of committees, and this was the one that struck me as the one that could use some focus. I'm a businessman, I work for an investment company, I run their technology department.
That's going to be my question, what your, what your professional background was. So thank you for coming forward. It's a very passionate commission, so I think you'll enjoy it, and I think it's nice to have a perspective like yours on it because they're, they're very, they're very passionate.
Good.
So they could use some technical, you know, assistance, I think, and research and looking for different options, as you just heard us talk about for the past 20 minutes.
Yeah, yes.
How often do they meet, Lorraine? The Water Resources, do you know?
Once a month.
Is it once?
On Tuesdays.
And you're up there with once a month?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any background in kind of that field? Not that you need to, because there's state experts. We have the technological background that Mara mentioned, so just an interest as dealing with an issue that's currently.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a problem solver. That's what I do for a living, and this feels like a problem that needs some solutions.
Right.
I typically use technology to solve the problems that may or may not be relevant in this case, but.
Oh, no, I think it's very relevant.
I'm willing to do the research and find out what the opportunities are and present ideas to you guys to make good decisions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, John, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Next, we have the Bylaw Review Committee, Matthew Brown. Come on up, Matt. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in bylaw review.
Well, I was on the charter commission in the very beginning, 1972, a long time ago. And I was on the second charter commission. And I think that, looking back over the 40 years since we put that charter in, there were two things that I felt, I feel now that was a mistake. I would like to see, of course, it has to go through town meeting and things like that, but I think we made a mistake when we took away the idea of a quorum on town meeting. And I think that should be relooked at and discussed. And the other thing that I think was a mistake is when we arranged the elections of school board and planning board and selectmen so that nobody ran at large. Everyone had to run for a particular spot. So in order to run for, for an executive position in situ, you had to choose somebody to run against. So you start off with an adversarial position. It's, and I don't think that, I think that kept a lot of people from running. I think it's better to have people who are interested in the positions to present their name and not run against a particular person. I think it, I think it opens things up a little bit. I noticed that's the way they do it in Cohasset, and what it brings in is the concept of a bullet vote. When I was on the charter commission many, many, many years ago, there was a lot, there were a lot of people that were opposed to that concept, and so we worked hard to change it. Remember, we went to district, selectmen's by district, and that's since been changed so that selectmen run and, and school board members and planning board members run for a particular seat. And I think that's had a negative effect. I think you ought to, if you're interested in volunteering to help the town, you shouldn't have to run against somebody. I think you ought to just say, I'm, I'm interested in running for school board. I want to put my name in. I like all the other people, I have no complaint against them, I just would like to volunteer to do it and see how people go. Well, that's my opinion. I think it's a committee. I would have to talk to the committee, and they would have to talk to me, I'm sure. But that, those are the two things that I thought we, we dropped the ball on many years ago.
John, you think?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I applaud you for offering to do things. A little surprised because over the last several years in your, your job and at town meetings, you've been quite rude.
Well, that's your opinion. I think the selectmen occasionally are rude.
Matt, I'm talking. So you can talk afterwards. I can only give you my opinion. So I'd like to see the fact that you actually wanted to participate and hopefully doing something good for the town. You know, whether, whether your opinion on these things would focus on a committee or would come through a committee is one thing or another, but I guess I'm a little bit concerned with how you're going to act on the committee based on the way that you've acted over the last several years and your, your cartoons of people and the way you've acted at town meetings. So that, that's my biggest concern as, as a voting member, is whether to put them on a committee or not. I do, again, like the fact that at least you're not standing in the background like you have for several years, throwing stones at everybody, and you're actually coming before us to get involved, but that's my biggest concern in terms of putting you on a committee on any aspect.
Well, I think my experience of being on the charter commission for two, twice.
When was that?
1972. 1972, and I believe 1998, and the fact that those were elected positions, and I did quite well with the election. Also, a lot of people get offended when they're criticized, and that's part of the price of public office. And I'm sorry if you're sensitive to that, but that's the way it goes.
That's your opinion?
Yes, it is, my opinion.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
So I thought you raised a lot of good points. Things have, being a recent person that's run for office, I've always found it challenging to pit myself against an incumbent. But I have the same question for you. How, how would you handle, Mr. Brown, adversaries on your own committee?
Well, all you can do is, I guess you can't really talk to many of the people who are on the committees that are run because they've left town or died.
No, 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 I mean, would, should you be appointed, there's only one person today There's only one person today that's on the bylaws committee, so we still need to...
You need a committee.
Oh, there's two? In addition to Patricia? We have another one? Okay. So, then that's three. So, that's great. So, I guess what I'm looking for to better understand from you is your temperament in working with those other folks and how you would deal with adversity of those that may not agree with you and where you see things should go.
Well, when you're on a committee, you've got to get consensus. It does very little good to be adversarial. You have to convince people. And if you can't do that, you don't amount to much on a committee. These two issues, and I would be very interested in listening to whatever the other issues were, but these are the two issues that I would be interested in. And I think they're defensible. And I would try to defend those positions. And if you can't get people to agree with you, you can't get people to agree with you. And that's the end of it. You have votes, and make a decision.
Thank you.
The only question I have is, you raised... I didn't anticipate what you had said, Mr. Brown. But the only question I had is, I thought the bylaw review was to review proposed bylaws by other committees, like if zoning board came in and said, "We're gonna change," or planning said they wanted to change. And I'm just trying to see if I could find it in the Charter. But it wasn't my understanding that the bylaw review is the committee is to promulgate the bylaws. It's to review proposed bylaws. So, that's the only question I have that I'd need to take a look at because I'm not sure that as a committee you are empowered to promulgate new bylaws. So, I'm not sure. And while I understand, in all due respect, I have to say, it's interesting, you know, the at-large notion. There are a number of towns that have that. Other towns have districts. I've heard people say both, and I've heard people say some towns have what we have proposed. And I think various towns have come to the conclusion, one way's better than the other, and some like it that way, and they continue to do it that way, like Situate. Or some may say, "Let's, you know, go tet-to-tet with Mike Hayes, and Mike Hayes and Danny He runs." You know what I mean? That happens. Or you do the at-large. I'm not sure which is better. I think it's intriguing.
Let me understand what you're trying to say, that in order to be on the bylaw review committee, you can't have any particular opinions of your own, but you've got to take opinions from people who want change and then see what... See if you think that's a good idea?
I think that's the charge of the bylaw, Mr. Brown. That's not... I'm not trying to be cute here. I'm just trying to tell you, I think that's exactly the way it is. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, whether a new charter review committee should be... Certainly, that's a consideration. I think the charge of the bylaw review committee is just to review the bylaws.
It's actually both, John.
It's not to do it.
It is actually both. So...
So, when we have general bylaws proposed, it goes to the bylaw committee for review and recommendation. But there's nothing in the bylaw preventing the bylaw committee from suggesting revisions to the bylaw that the board... To the Board of Selectmen.
All right.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Right. Since I've been here, it's only been for the purpose you quoted. But, you know, if they... You know, there's some inconsistencies in the bylaw that we've done on a case-by-case basis, things like that, tweaking it or new state law passes or something like that. It's not out of the realm of possibility that the bylaw committee would review and suggest those to the Board for amendment at the general bylaws.
Fair enough.
So, is it your intention to come in and just try and make changes in the few areas that you want?
I want to discuss those two particular things. Those I considered were mistakes in the past, and I would like to see what people agree with me. And of course, there's another part of it. There are other people have ideas that they want to bring before the bylaw review committee, and I'd like to listen to them, too. But I have some experience in this since we wrote and rewrote the Charter. And so, I understand the Charter pretty well. But it's always a good idea to take a look at what you've done. And over the course of the years, those two things, which I thought were great ideas, I don't think have worked. And particularly the lack of quorum. I think that's a... That was presented to us in the Charter Commission as a great idea to keep people coming to town meeting because they... And I don't think it's worked.
I will note that I'm sure at least one, maybe two, of Mr. Brown's points are contained in the Charter and not the bylaws, so in which case he could not address them.
So, what we need is a new Charter Commission?
I'm pretty sure...
If there's anyone agrees with it.
No, I'm pretty sure, Matt, the way people run for office by declaring the two things that's in the town Charter.
Yes.
This is the general bylaws of the town committee.
How about the... I think the quorum is also in the Charter.
It could be. So, in which case, they wouldn't be under the purview of the bylaw review.
So, what is under the bylaw review? If you can't change important things...
The general bylaws of the town.
That don't amount to much.
I would disagree.
Well, I've talked to previous members of the Board, and I asked them if it was a good idea. They said, "No, they don't do anything." And the people that I talked to said, "We never did anything," and then he got off. So...
So, do you not want to get involved now?
No, I would like to get involved in it.
It seems like you want to go in there with your agenda and work on those two issues, but you don't really want to go in and look at all those useless bylaws.
Well, I'd love to look at it. That was what the Charter Commission did many years ago. We looked at every...
But this is the bylaw review. Those things that don't really mean that much in the town.
What bylaw would you like to review? I mean, it sounds to me like you don't have anything to review. It has the... Maybe the guy that I talked to that said, "We don't do anything," was correct, that nothing comes before that.
I think nothing's been done because there hasn't been a quorum. I mean, I don't think there's been...
On the bylaw committee?
Yeah, the storm bylaws, for the recent ones. There wasn't a quorum for the bylaw review, but that's something that went through about three years of torturous reading, of really dry laws. Mr. Hayes, I keep looking at him because I know he's aware of it from planning, and it went... In fact, I think it even failed initially, or we took it back from town meeting to review it yet again. So, I mean, that was one. The zoning bylaws were all updated about 2010. Another, a review of that, and that's very dry, I can tell you that. My understanding outside of that, I don't think we as a Board have actually changed any of the general bylaws, really, unless they're fees. So, you're correct. Whoever told you that they're not necessarily effective as far as like meetings because there hasn't been a great deal of change of whether it's the general bylaws or I say the zoning bylaws. So, yes, they're partially correct in what they're saying.
I would say, though, and Patricia Lambert was a sole member for a long time, and we've advertised and we've solicited folks to serve. There's a number of things in the bylaws, and as you know, committees, there are functions of the chairs that are on them to some point as well, where it's inconsistent with the Charter. So, if you, just for example, if you look at the budget calendar, there's three pages of requirements in the general bylaws for the town budget cycle as well as the Charter. Many of those don't reconcile. There's places where there says... There's one right now where in one place it says Conservation Commission, seven members, and another nine members. So, because the bylaws haven't been looked at and reviewed in totality for a number of years, those are the kinds of things that have sort of bubbled up over the years in terms of correcting and...
Because you haven't had...
Right. They need to be reconciled. And there may be bylaws that are in other communities that we might want to consider having here in Situate. Or bylaws where they've existed since we originally adopted and maybe need to be expanded or tightened up where the language isn't clear. So, I think there's a world of opportunity to look at the general bylaws and other bylaws that we may want to do. And from, you know, a working point of view, there's a number of inconsistencies with the Charter in terms of doing that. A working group committee. You know, if traditionally in the past, the bylaw review committee only reviewed bylaws for stormwater or, you know, changing the fee for noncriminal dispositions, you know, maybe that was just the, you know, the way they saw their function. But certainly, that committee has an opportunity to do more than it had in the past with enough members to start to meet.
So, what's the prognosis? Are you gonna have a committee or not?
We have to have people come forth to volunteer, and the Board is desirous of appointing them. We have been unsuccessful in soliciting people. You're as one of the first people have come forth in a while.
Well, if you ever have a committee, I hope you let me know.
Well, we can put you on it, and you can be one less that we have to find later.
Well... Oh, my goodness. That's fine. But I... It's... I guess you need problems before you get people on the committee.
Well, it sounds like we have the problems to have to be researched.
Gentlemen, Mr. Brown, that's not true. It's a function of whether people are interested in doing that type of work. I mean, you're the first... You're actually the second person because there's a person we appointed back in June who said he was interested. That's Darren Campbell. And let me tell you, if you go back for the past 10 years, it's been really difficult to get people interested in this committee. I mean, and it's very simple. You're reading very dry laws, bylaws, that some are inconsistent with others, just like we had the CPC issue a few years ago. I mean, to try to get people to get interested in doing it, it's much easier to get people on CPC who say, "We can spend this money on a big project, and it looks really nice." Or somebody who says, "You know what? I think I'd rather be involved with the beautification committee because they're out there doing something without getting, you know, ridiculed." So, what I'm saying to you is, yes, we'd love to have you do it, but the problem is, it's not... We keep telling with the news department, whether it's the Ledger or the Mariner, "Please publish and do it." We don't get anybody who submits their application. If you can find the reason, you can find more people to come in for the bylaw review, God bless you. You're the chair. I'd make your chair right from here. And I'm thinking, we can't find the people to fill it. So, I'm gonna call around. I'm assuring Patricia, hopefully talk to you and say, "Why don't you do it?" And I'm like, "Help us out." I mean, find people who are interested.
How many do you need?
I think we have a quorum of... Is it five?
And you've got two.
Three. We're short. We're getting there.
Two point... You have two members.
Darren and Patricia.
So, we're going for our third.
Well, keep looking. Keep my name in mind. Let me know how well you do, and I'll see what we can find.
So, are we taking your name off the list here?
No.
So, you would still like to be appointed?
Don't get excited over it.
Well, I'm not saying you're gonna get elected.
Not if you have anything to do with it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Right.
Okay. Where am I? Okay, we're moving on to a discussion of vote on a drain easement relocation, 37 Collier Road. We have Sean McCarthy and Adam Brodsky. How are you, Adam?
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Adam Brodsky and I represent Bill Trefoni and Steve Mather. We own two adjacent non-conforming lots on Collier Road. Each lot has a small single-family house. And we are combining the lots, basically down to two houses.
Thank you.
And building one new house. We're taking two non-conforming lots, turning into one conforming lot, taking two structures and building a new single structure on that. There is a town drainage easement in line that essentially runs right through the middle of the project site. And what we proposed at my client's expense is to relocate that line to the... I guess that would be the northern end of the combined lot, which requires the Board of Selectmen to approve the relocation of that drainage easement. The present drainage line is in disrepair. It ends somewhere mysteriously near the seawall. That's all going to be removed. We're gonna put a new line in. It will meet stormwater standards, and in fact, the DBW's condition of approval has required additional stormwater treatment. And so, this is actually town stormwater, not stormwater associated with the client's property. So, you presently have untreated municipal stormwater going through here, discharged essentially to the beach area. My clients are willing to pay to upgrade that. And so, you'll actually have additional TSS removal to meet stormwater standards. And in order to do that, we need the Board's permission to relocate these... It's a...
Yeah, please.
So, you're replacing 15-inch concrete pipe with 18-inch. It's gonna... There aren't any bends or anything like that. It's just a straight shot from the street to the sea... Not the seawall, but the rip route. Is that correct? You're gonna do some type of storm scepter? Correct. Prove drain layer from Situate? Correct. Do you know what it is yet? Not that it's important. No, they'll have to pull a permit in order to do that. We've got approval from the Conservation Commission. They're in the process of getting their building permit approved. They expect it surely. But they'll need to pull a position permit in order to do this one. Similar to what Steve Bedrock wanted to have us do on Old Oak Brook Road with the...
Correct. You can't build it here.
DPW is holding us to that very same standard.
I don't see a downside to it. I mean, proving the line.
No. No, I've worked with their site in the area. We arrived at something to do that. Is the other... Is there a bottom on the other side? And are there any negative odds to that process property? You know, you're putting it in the... You know, taking it from the middle of these two parcels and putting it to one end, I assume.
As far as the property line to where it's going?
It's below grade, obviously. And during the Conservation Process, we had a number of others attend, but all were supportive of the project. I know it's covered and all that, but there's still an easement. I just... Just if there's anyone here in the audience that... And during that public hearing process, we talked about relocating that drainage easement. So, that was part of the discussion during the preparation of the hearing process. Well, it's actually better, I think, in my opinion.
To move it?
Yes. You presently couldn't access it to repair it, which is why it's in disrepair. Once you relocate the line, it's an open shot, so you have access to it in order to maintain it.
John?
Tony? No, I have no questions.
Your motion?
So, have people... Well, I guess my concern is if it's on the agenda, people didn't know to come here to talk about it. So, was this... Did this get... Go before Concon?
Yes.
And they were...
Yes, we had improved. Several public hearings in front of the Conservation Commission, and we discussed this project as a whole. This was part of it because obviously, we weren't going to put a new house over an existing drainage easement. So, throughout the process, we talked about relocating the drainage easement to this side of the property.
So, are they merging the lots, Adam?
Yes.
And one house being built?
One house. So, again, we're taking two non... Under-sized lots. undersized lots. We're combining them, so you now have one conforming lot with a conforming structure, which is always the goal of zoning.
Right, but the neighbors... I assume the one house is gonna be much bigger than the two little houses?
There were some concerns expressed at one point regarding some of the neighbors and views, which is not a conservation issue. But at the end of the process, I believe, and I know if any of the neighbors are here, I believe everyone was satisfied with the design.
Sean?
I just thought, Adam, number of bedrooms? How many bedrooms do we have? Because that is our purview. We have three and three, and we're gonna have... How many bedrooms are we having?
This is not a... I don't recall. I can look it up for you, but...
I just... Sean must have talked about that.
Right, and it's getting existing. It's not gonna be an excess of six. Wouldn't be an excess of six, would it?
Give me a moment, I should be able to tell you. Well, what if they... You know, what if they have 10? Is that still all right?
No.
John? It's not our business, it's sewer commissioners. I mean, there are some towns...
Going from six bedrooms between the two?
I'm just making it up.
Right, but this isn't for sewer, right?
This is for stormwater.
Right. Sewer will come back.
Separate system.
I'm just trying to see if I can answer your question.
But they'll have to come forest for sewer, right?
The actual building itself?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, because they just look up?
They're already connected, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a...
They can increase it.
Each lot's 5,000 square feet, so...
Whereabouts is it, Sean? Or Adam?
Between Mike Horn.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looking for...
Look at the upper looking point.
Lincoln. It's towards the farther end.
That's correct.
Towards the access to this bit.
Before you start to handle that up.
Yep.
Down the street from Jobin's.
Yeah, it's closer to my Rick's house.
Jackie Bragg's house.
I was saying Jackie's what I was thinking.
The road starts going up.
Full plans?
Yeah, I don't think I...
That's all right. Just like you said, it'll go before water health, I'm sure.
Correct.
I mean, the reality is they have two homes, undersized lots. They're gonna merge them together. It's gonna be one house. The house is gonna be built within its building envelope. As far as the bedrooms go, I know to Sean's point, if they weren't connected to sewer, then maybe we could say something, but even though they're connected to sewer, then even if they increase it to eight, two more beyond it, I really don't think, at this point, it'll make much difference, because people do that. And I will say, the benefit is that they're gonna be a larger drainage easement suitable that we have access to. So I mean, from that standpoint, I have no issues. That's why I asked whether it was two homes and then the build, because then I'm like, that they're gonna merge it together into one lot. And the reason is, it's simple. It's ocean-side water.
So is the water gonna go down the foot?
Water is gonna go down from the rip wrapping goes down.
Presently, it's discharged at the base of the ventman somewhere. We couldn't even locate the outlet. It will be rebuilt in a similar fashion, but in this case, you'll actually have treatment for that water's discharge.
Mr. Chair, do you want a motion?
Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen allow the existing 10-foot-wide drainage easement to be relocated from the southerly property line to the northerly property line of 37 Collier Road.
Second. Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Sean.
Alan, do you want these back?
Sure.
Actually, do you need one?
Next, we have a discussion and vote of lifting of a restriction on Elaine Riddle, Torrey's Lane. Mike Hayes?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll just sit right here if that's all right.
That's perfect. No problem. Can we just move the microphone over for Mike?
And I'll speak up.
Okay. Yeah, you won't need it, right?
Thank you. The board may remember, a year ago, we were in front of you on this matter. There was a restriction on a portion of Mrs. Riddle's property dating back into the 70s. At the time, Mrs. Riddle received special permits to build on two lots at the end of Torrey's Lane. Her then council had discussed with the then-town council that restriction and whether or not under the general laws, that restriction went away by the passage of time. And it was the consensus at that point that indeed it did. However, more recently, and that was in 2005, more recently, I've been in discussion with Jim Truman, who is just retired, but Jim and I researched this problem together and we both agreed that this type of restriction was not eliminated by the passage of time in either the town meeting vote. At the time, Mrs. Riddle got a special permit to build down there. She, in discussions with the zoning board, had agreed to donate a piece of that property to the town. The purpose of that was, you may remember that this property is at the back end of the golf course. And this, by deeding the property to the town, which she has done, it would give the town a better access to the end of the golf course from Torrey's Lane. There's an old path out there that was historically used, but was not technically the town's property, but now she's deeded over 18,000 square feet to the town for that purpose. So we had... We came to the board last year with the same proposal and the concern was raised as to the potential effect that two houses at the end of Torrey's Lane might have on any of the town's wells. I had done some amateur engineering and scaling off and it was my opinion that these two dwellings would be close to a half a mile from any well. And the property was outside of the state's wellhead protection zone, but the board at the time wanted to be safe and we agreed to take that off the table. And DPW was going to look into what their view was on any potential effect on any town wells. There are two wells in the area, as you know, and each about a half a mile away from this property. I've talked to Kevin. Kevin and Sean did do some work on it and I believe they have... They submitted a report. I spoke with Kevin last week and he told me that as far as DPW was concerned, they did not see a problem with potential building on this property vis-a-vis effects on any wells. So with that being the case, I'd ask the board to reconsider or reconsider this again and with that information in hand and hopefully make this a Selectmen's article at town meeting. And of the matter, Mrs. Riddle is here. She has been working on this for almost 20 years and we hope we're getting towards the end.
Thanks. I'm a little confused, Mike. Refreshing memory. So Mrs. Riddle gave us a parcel of land. Was it just... It wasn't to protect a well? It was just to gain access by Joey Carroll's house, right? Right across the street, at the end of Torrey's Lane?
Yes. And then the... As best as we can put together the history of this, Ray Whitaker purchased this property originally, or part of it, from the town of Situate.
Two houses.
And then, yes. And then part of that deed from the town of Situate to Ray Whitaker did put a building restriction on a portion of it. And that portion that the restriction is on, as best as the engineers can determine, cuts through the two lots that Mrs. Riddle still owns and got zoning approval for 11 years ago. So it would render both lots unbuildable if not removed.
What size lots are these now?
Well, it's in a 20,000-square-foot zone. There is one lot that's 20,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage. That lot meets zoning. The other lot is a 50-foot lot, 50-foot frontage lot with over 40,000 square feet as required by zoning.
Mike, do you have a picture of it?
I do. I have plans.
So one lot is 20,000.
It's a 50-foot frontage lot.
Mr. Chair, Sean has a map and Sean, why don't you just use the bigger map, too?
This is a picture of the two lots that were created through zoning. Was extended and then through the permit extension law remained in effect. We would have to go back to zoning again if this restriction is ever removed.
So we're talking about Lot 1 and Lot 3, Sean?
Two. Two and three.
One, two, and then parcel 3 was deeded to the town.
As far as deciding the well?
As you're saying, the sites are not located within the state wellhead protection zones. There's only one, which is a 400-foot protection zone from these are wells 18A and B, which the town uses for public water supply. This is the zone 2, which is an influence on that well. Torrey's Lane is up here, and these are two lots.
Sean, didn't you think there was a well right up near there?
I thought there was, but I guess I'm mistaken.
I'm still trying to research that myself through some of the old records. I did speak with the water department.
Was it the one that was contaminated?
There was an abandoned well in the area. And it was my understanding in my memory and going back 40 years that one of the reasons for that restriction was to potentially protect that well, which has since been abandoned.
But where is that well? It's on the... Near the property?
No one seems to know. There is one on Kent Street that they used to use, that the golf course.
There was one that we're gonna use to cover the golf course by the rest.
So let me ask you this, Sean. When... Are there any plans in DPW or somewhere in the archives dealing with the construction of the golf course? In other words, when they were constructing the golf course, there would have had to have been, with all the positioning of the holes, the site plan for each of the holes. And I would assume, I forgot the name of the company that did it. It began with a P or something. They should have some renderings on...
I even pulled somebody on land profiles.
But that... But I would think, at least with the construction of it, they would have had to have identified existing land to figure out. Have you looked at that?
I haven't looked at the golf course property, other than where well things eat on now.
That's 18, the one you just represented depicted?
Correct, yes. That we use as public was by now.
So...
I think we never got there, that's the point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with approving it. The only concern I have, and it's funny because my fingerprints are all over this 2005 decision, Mrs. Riddle, I actually was younger, I had less gray hair, and I wasn't wearing glasses at the time when it happened. The concern I have, and this is I just wish we could just rule out, is there a well or not? And the only reason is, given our situation right now with wells, I want to make sure that in the event that there was, we have to be very cautious about it. But obviously, you know, the last time we were here, you were here in like January or February, was it?
Well, this is my third trip. The first time I was here was in...
Last September or not?
15, and then I was back in September or 15.
September, October.
And here we are again.
So is there a way of finding out from DPW? I mean, I just think that, you know, when they're building the golf course, they would have had to have known the existing topography if there was a well. They would have depicted it. Because when it was sand and gravel back then, they were digging it out. They weren't identifying wells. They were just digging all around the place. I would think the golf course, there's plans. What's... What's with the names? It begins with an H. Has something was the golf course designer. Sorry, I just forgot.
Mike, about 10 years ago, there was something at town meeting where we were talking about this lamb chop lot so that they could build back there. What was that?
Billy Armberg. Was Billy the attorney?
Bill Armberg was the attorney. Copman and Page, I believe, was the town council at the time. And I've talked to, obviously with Mr. Armberg about it and he and town council agreed that this had passed time where it was enforceable. But I'm not sure, town meeting, that I don't recall.
You don't know why it came be...
Maybe it was to grant us parcel 3?
Did we get parcel 3?
Yes.
Probably why then it was.
Well, I think we gave... Because we gave them something here.
That was written in town 2009.
Oh, so that's what it is.
There was something about... Why did it go to town meeting? There was something to do about the building of this lamb chop lot. Because I didn't know what a lamb chop lot was at the time.
Pork chop.
Pork chop.
It's because they deeded the property, parcel 3, to the town and they probably explained it.
I think the zoning, the planning board would like to do something about pork chop lots that the bylaw review committee could look at, too.
Does anyone have that number?
Anyway, well, we had to come to the Board of Selectmen to approve that deed. I don't recall going to town meeting. I do, I know, I'm sure we came here...
I think I was on the advisory committee.
For the Selectmen to approve, accepting the deed.
Maybe.
But why? Why did it happen? What precipitated that? Why did they give us the land? Why did they just want to break the lot out this way?
Because I think it was a part of the conditions of, "We're gonna split this off," and probably to say, "We don't want to pay taxes on it."
It was an incentive to the zoning board to approve the lots to get access from a public way to the back end of the golf course.
Yeah, but that wouldn't come before the Selectmen.
So who bought... Who did Mrs. Riddle buy the land from?
Ray Whitaker.
Ray Whitaker, okay. All right.
Right, excuse me.
So did you ever bought... Did you ever build a house in the back on this pork chop, lamb chop?
There are two houses constructed before this land. If you come down Torrey's Lane, two houses, one of which Mrs. Riddle did buy, build and live in for many years and has since sold it.
And then...
This is the back end of that property.
Lot 1 and 2 have not been built on. That's what I was asking.
Lot 1 and 2 have never been built on.
Nothing's been built on it. It's vacant.
But it's zoned that lot.
It is a single-family zone.
And nothing's been built on it.
Correct.
Because of the restriction.
Correct.
So that's at these times? Which would have made the value of the land much reduced at the time, because it had a restriction and you can't build on it.
Right. I'm not sure which is being taxed.
So if the restrictions lifted, that changes the value of the land considerably.
Correct. It's buildable.
So why is this restriction on it?
Again, because of the abandoned well.
I don't know that for a fact. That's my memory from 40 years ago.
You think? Yep.
When was Article 37? 78? No.
That was...
Just final pass restriction held.
76, maybe?
78.
There's some missing pieces here.
It was the same year that Mr. Whitaker bought the property back in 78.
Okay. I guess what I'm driving at is I'm happy to support you for it. It's just I need to be confirmed that, or I need to know whether or not there's a well out there. I definitely need to know. And I know we've asked this, because if there's a well, then I have a different opinion, only because of our situation with the water. I just, I'm trying to figure out, how do we find out whether or not there's an abandoned well back there? Which is why I was wondering whether or not there'd be something in the... When they were developing the golf course, they'd have to know what's out there when they're plowing around, digging and moving earth to create the fairway.
It's gotta be somewhere, or else why would he put a restriction on it?
Sean, did you check with Paul Scott at all?
Yeah, as well as some of the former water department. Just memory.
Right.
What was out there?
So why is there a restriction on the deed?
I wish this was clear as to why. Again, it's my belief and my memory, it was done to protect a well on the current golf course that has since been abandoned. But I don't know that for a fact and nobody seems to be able to remind us.
That would protect this.
Yep.
Provide a little more protection. Maybe that's it.
So you want us to consider putting this on the warrant?
Correct.
So we don't have to decide any or none?
No, next meeting.
Name and address and all that.
Anne Bourbon Penncrest Road.
10.
10.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The golf course came before the planning board back in... I was involved with permitting of the golf course back in 94. And what you're talking about here, if memory serves me correctly, this predates the golf course. And that parcel of land, there used to be basically a demolition dump back there where the town of Situate would travel along that path and dump stumps.
It's a small concrete pad there.
Right. So I think that that may have had something to do with it. But have you checked with planning in terms of those old... But have you checked with planning in terms of those old plans, what had golf course...
What'd you say, what'd you build on?
I went back to Washington State for travel.
Then that far back.
Because the restriction covers the entire thing.
Because I think we gave them the...
I wonder if it might not be on the golf course development plan.
It was this, listen, so we have this, and...
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Sean, has, have the boundaries of the protection area changed since the Whitakers put the restriction on in current standards?
If there is no well, you could build on it.
Do you know? Well, maybe, and maybe that's something to look at, too. I don't know. Maybe that's why it was there, but now the boundaries are different.
They gave us this because we gave them the ability to build back?
Because you're saying this is outside of the protection for this, this well.
That's correct.
Right.
So then when do you get rid of this?
Which is also outside of that.
Correct.
And maybe that's all we're trying to do, is protect this well.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is that that's probably...
I did, on Mass G.I.S.U. panel, had wells that have been dissolved.
So how can we change the deed?
Was it there?
No. This is a plot of showing dissolved wells as well.
So it doesn't exist as far as that says, right?
Well, we found some discrepancies between states.
But how can we change the deed? What if they can't, they're not for some other reason, we don't know?
We have one that the state has.
Because it doesn't say why.
At this point, it'll be another instance of...
Okay.
We need to either confirm or discharge it. So, I mean, Mr. Hayes has been here a few times trying to get this accomplished. And we've talked about this abandoned well in the past, and we haven't come up with anything.
Did we give them the deeds from us?
I'm inclined to support putting it on.
I would, no, I would support putting it on the, putting on the warrant. I guess the question I would have, Tricia, for you, would be, if we would put on the warrant and we find out some new information in the, in the interim?
We don't have to vote the warrant until your next meeting.
Okay.
You're only closing it tonight.
Okay.
So we could try in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Find something that Sean has a...
And that's it, and then it's gotta come to an end at some point.
And then...
It has to end at some point.
Well, yeah, then you'd vote whether or not to put on the warrant.
This is the third time that, I've only been on the board my fourth year, and this is the third time that I've sat here with this.
Sean, have you tried to reach out to Rory Wood?
I have not.
Why did you?
He might be a good one.
It's a good idea, Sean.
Rory Whitaker, who built those two houses.
What two houses, on one side?
Yes, over here.
He built this is...
Okay.
What does she know?
Sean.
Right here, I think. This one, right?
I could be wrong, I don't know. I'll ask my brother, he's one of his best friends.
Mr. Chair? Some of your questions.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Hi, Joe Armstrong, everyone paying a good night.
How are you, Joe?
Has any, I would ask a question for the board. Has anybody checked with the original developer? Because I have developers' plans, and I'll tell you right now, I don't care, it's a hundred years old, their original applications are in files, most of them scanned now. So, and I know there were articles in Golf Digest about what a wonderful difficult course it was. So I would say, if it's not on the plans and the records of the golf course manager, the original developer plans, you could certainly get it from the developer, and I'm sure that's a matter of press record, who built it. They will, ninety-nine percent they'd have it. If they were a developer of any quality, they would still have it. It's only been, has it been fifteen years ago, Tricia?
A hundred.
Twenty.
Oh, twenty, that long. We're all getting ready.
Well, we could certainly look into the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's the best source.
To the developers, where you'll get it.
Because they would have reviewed the whole plan.
The actual X, Y, Z company that built the golf course, they'll have it, look at these, guaranteed. Well, guarantee, but if they're still in business, they'd have.
Maybe there's the minutes from our, whenever we voted this in seventy-eight, that says why we put the restriction on it.
How'd you vote on it?
Okay, so...
Come on, you weren't that old.
So let's look into it, and we'll...
Next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
Can you have more information for next meeting? I don't have a problem with it, just wanted to see if that's, in fact, that's where the well is that we're talking about.
We have to close...
Do we need to, um...
Yeah, that's fine, but we don't have, we don't have to decide on this till next meeting.
We have to vote on it, but we can put it on it.
Do you vote to say in spite, pending a vote? Is that how you do it?
How do we do that?
We just...
You're voting the warrant articles at your next meeting.
We have time, Mike. It's not like we need to put it on right now. It's just next meeting, which will be in two weeks.
Just close the warrant tonight.
We'll be able to.
And I'll go through the planning board plans and...
Yeah, we'll look at minutes.
Down with Sean. If it's, I don't think if it's there, it's probably not nowhere.
This question keeps coming up. There's gotta be, there's gotta be somewhere. That might be good.
Well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Thanks, Sean. Do you need these, are these yours here? Are these, are these mics, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you raise?
I did. Look at it.
That's Adam's. Oh, no, that's Mike's.
Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to a discussion of vote of the Veterans Cemetery Regulations. We have Don Knapp. How are you, Don?
Great, I guess you're...
Thank you and John for all your work on the regulations. Mr. Danahue, that is.
I guess tonight we're here to discuss the final touches on this in a vote.
Correct.
John did some good work on this and got it all together, and...
Yep.
I think, I like it, I think it looks good, so...
You made a lot of the changes that we discussed, so, thank, thank you.
One second, I wanna look at...
Okay. Yeah, I read it.
The one if they were, if they were sent to service from Situate?
Yes, that's one. That's under, that's another. First one is, a veteran is defined, they have to be a veteran, as defined by the chapter, and, and it goes through, a veteran released or discharged from active duty other than for training under honorable conditions who resided in the town of Situate on the date of his or her death. So if somebody passes here in town, or, again, you get the veteran released or discharged from active duty under honorable conditions who resided at the town for a period of twenty-five years. So you got that. So if somebody goes away, lived here twenty-five years, moves away, and they say, I want to come back, they were here for a minimum of twenty-five years. Then you get the next one, a veteran released or discharged from active duty other than for honorable conditions. And they have to leave to go to a, a care facility. So we kind of just define a care facility, could be nursing, could be long-term, could be short-term. And then again, you have another person, another member of the services who dies on active duty. Those are anybody, you know, like, people who've died, passed away while here, like Kelly Boye. Which goes without saying, but, you know what, might as well put it in there. Next one's a veteran, blah, 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 other than, whose parent is already interred. So for example, if your father, mother, veteran, they're interred, they wanted, they were inactive, they want to be buried with their parent eligible, they could do it. But they need to be cremated, given the space issues. The next one is a veteran released or discharged from active duty other than for training, da-da-da. Approved by the Board of Selectmen due to extenuating circumstances. This gives the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to maybe hear somebody who comes in and under extenuating circumstances wants to be placed in there, then I think it gives you a little relief valve for the board to take a look, listen to it, make a determination. Doesn't mean the board has to, but that's why it's extenuating, they really have to give a, a reason for it. I think you covered everything, so I mean, I... And then the other one is a spouse and a child, a dependent child. Again, circumstances could be, your spouse wants to be buried with you, again, they have to be cremated. A dependent child, you know, you look at that and you say, okay, somebody who's under a certain age requirement, which is, it's here. If you have a child who's disabled, that could be an extenuating circumstance, gives the board the relief valve to be able to say, yes, that's where the child's gonna be buried with, his father or mother. And then it explains, you know, but those are costs that are gonna have to be borne by the veteran's family to do it. I think... That was it, really.
So is the one in here, I, I may have just missed it.
Which one did you ask?
If you are living in Situate, and that's when you're called into duty.
Tricia?
Yes, that was the first one.
No, you know what, let me check, you asked that.
Yeah, if you enter into service, first or second, it was at the beginning. You enter into the service, active duty from the town of Situate. That was one of the, that was towards the beginning.
It should be in here, but let me read it again.
I saw it.
Released or discharged from active duty.
Oh, yeah. Any member who dies on active duty, or, no, whose name record at the town of Situate. You know, Tony's asking for another one, you're right, Tony, I might not have it.
What are you asking, Tony?
That if you get mustered into the town.
Something about a case where if you were, if you were living in Situate and called into duty...
I'm missing it.
That would put you...
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would put them...
If you get mustered in from the town of Situate.
So, they'd be a veteran and therefore be entitled.
Still apply, yeah.
So you're thinking about something like in the National Guard, they get called up, or something like that, is that what you're getting at?
No, Tony's, what Tony's saying, and it's not here, you're right, is if you get mustered into the, into military from the town of Situate. I get, I get called to go, and I'm born here. And I go in at age eighteen, then that should be one of the pre, one of the other ones that's not listed here.
Home of record.
You got a home of record. I don't have it. I'm missing it.
I thought I saw that.
Why, why isn't that covered under any member of the armed forces of the United States who dies on active duty and whose home of record is the town of Situate? I'm confused.
Which one's at the, for home of record?
That's under... So if you read, a veteran released or discharged...
Five down.
It's a second one, that covers it.
Even the second one covers it.
Yeah.
He's discharged from active duty or service. So if you get called up and you're on active duty?
It's fine. I think Tony's saying that you have the ability that, let's say, I don't have to die, I don't have to die of my home of record, I could come back, maybe, I guess then you'd have to meet the twenty-five year requirement.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think two encompasses what I was thinking, they go and they pass away.
Right. It is. I think, I think you're thinking, like, if you go in at age eighteen, you're there for, say, four or five years, you come back and then you leave, you're thinking when they're seventy or eighty or ninety, and they come back and they want to be buried in Situate, that's where they have an opportunity to go.
And that can come before the board if they...
In extenuating circumstances.
That'll be covered underneath, right.
All right. That's fine.
Can I have a motion?
Move, any questions? Just from the audience, Mr. Chair?
I figured I'd go that way, and then we...
They might.
Oh, yes, sir.
I had a hard time here because the door was open. Could you read the first couple?
Sure. So the first thing is you have to be a rec, a veteran, as defined by Massachusetts law. And then you have the very, you have to have that to begin with, and then you have one of the following. One of which is, obviously you have to have honorable discharge, that's a part of it. But you reside in the town of Situate on the date of his or her death, okay? A veteran who has honorable discharge, who resided in the town of Situate for at least twenty-five years. So if somebody dies in Situate, you're a veteran, you're allowed to. Somebody who lived here for twenty-five years, a veteran, leaves, but says, I want to come back, or somebody wants to bury him here, they can qualify. Then another one is, if you have to leave the town and spend, you know, a number of years in, say, a, a care facility, and it's defined as long-term care, nursing home facility, residential care facility, or facility that provides health-related services to individuals, okay, who don't, who are not require, acquire the degree of care given in a hospital, okay? Somebody who's, you know, so they have the option of coming back because they may not be here for a few years. And then, if you die in active duty, you're absolutely in. And then, the next are extenuating circumstances, if somebody comes in with a compelling reason, says to the Board of Selectmen, I'd like this person to be buried here, they're gonna have to have some connection, they're gonna have to explain it. And then the other option would be a veteran spouse or dependent child. And those circumstances, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to be cremated, given the space issue. And, you know, there's some, I was just gonna say, obviously a spouse has to be legally married.
Still, they can...
Can't have a common-law marriage. Deceased, dependent child must be unmarried and under the age of twenty-one years, okay? The only caveat on that is, I've also realized that some people have disabled children who live with them until thirty or forty. That's the extenuating circumstance that I would envision. And then, again, the cremated remains are to be placed on top of the vault of the veteran, and all the expenses concerning spouse or child's interment, it's at the family's expense. And then I have any names to be placed on the back of the veteran's marker at the family's expense. And that's it. Anybody else have anything?
Could have a motion.
Will the Board of Selectmen approve the revised operational policy for codes of rules and regulations for Cudworth Veterans Center?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don, thank you. Well done. Appreciate it. We're gonna take a five-minute recess before we move on to the next item.
Perfect.
All right. Gonna move on to a presentation from Stephen Coulter of Situate Housing Authority. Lawson Green Apartments. How are you, sir?
Excellent, thank you very much for having us here. So I had, I had sent some information based on, you know, what I want to do is, is, is take an opportunity to, you know, first bring the board up to speed with all the work that the Housing Authority Board has been, has been doing to, to try to, to, to develop some additional affordable senior rental. So I want to first introduce my board, John Dwayne, Mike Collins, and Jody McDonough. And also acknowledge, we've been very fortunate to have a pro bono affordable housing consultant who is a Situate resident who has been volunteering his time. He's done an enormous amount of work, without whom we would not be as far along with this process, Joe Armstrong. So, basically, you know, what I want to do is, is just kind of take everyone back to, to, to the process that we as the board have done and how we got to where we are today. You know, take a look at the 2015 housing plan, you know, that the town had done, it really illustrated some of the, the fastest and, and biggest growing demographic groups It really illustrated some of the, the fastest and, and biggest growing demographic groups in Situate, and that is the sixty-five and, and up. And the fact that, you know, there's a tremendous lack of affordable rental housing in Situate. Really, there's a great need to focus on that. So, what we have, have done is utilize extra land that we had directly behind the central school building that the Housing Authority owns. And through conversations with, with Joe and taking a look at all of the, you know, the property that we had, what we did is approach the Affordable Housing Trust to get some funding, to do some engineering work and some legal work, so that we could figure out what we could do with the land that was basically dormant, empty land, and what we could do to be able to use that to be able to develop some affordable senior rental housing. So, we, as a board, we, we came up with some criteria that we wanted to try and achieve. We posted an RFP. And, and things that we wanted to see in the responses were a hundred percent of the units to be affordable. We also wanted to make sure that the property and that the, the building was architecturally consistent with the neighborhood, so that it fit in, so that when people drove by, they were not think, "Well, that's an affordable building." They'd think, "Wow, that's a nice building," and then learn after, "Wow, that's affordable." So, the, the appearance in having it fit and blend into the neighborhood was extremely important to us as a board. And to, to find a developer that could demonstrate the ability to manage the property ongoing, to be able to show that they're doing an excellent job with other properties that they have, so that, that we knew that, that this would be something that the town wouldn't have to be concerned about cost of maintenance or issues with that, that a qualified developer would be able to take care of this and have units that were affordable, deed-restricted in perpetuity. So, the way that, that this partnership works is we found a private developer who is putting in their own money. They're borrowing money on the open market through various low-income housing tax credit financing. And then also utilizing local support from the Affordable Housing money that's in CPC as well as Affordable Housing Trust, and then perhaps some, some state affordable housing funds that are available. So, basically, through this partnership, we're able to have a developer that has the expertise that is taking the risk to develop the property, to go through the process of all of the necessary board approvals to get the property approved, permitted, developed, borrow the money, assume the risk for that. And through the partnership with Affordable Housing Trust and CPC, that portion of it, number one, will show the DHCD and Mass Housing that there's community support to see this happen. And then it also helps to make sure that the process and the project can be financially feasible. And without that level of support from the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust, that's what makes the numbers work, to have these units be affordable and to keep them that way in perpetuity. And then, as I said, you know, the developer would be managing the property, and they would be responsible for long-term maintenance and fixing roofs and boilers and, and all of that. So, it really provides the town with the units that we so desperately need, with someone else being responsible to take care of that and to make sure that those units remain affordable in perpetuity and that all the maintenance and everything is, you know, is, is kept up. So, after we posted the RFP, we got three qualified responses. And each of them was interesting. Each of them had some great points to them. And they were all qualified developers that could come in and see the process through, be able to finance the property, and be able to, to do something that was a great addition to our community. At the end of the day, after we, as a board, we, we went on several field trips and we toured other properties that each of the developers have built and that currently manage. So, we wanted to see what these properties look like, how they, how they're being maintained. What are the residents, are they, are they happy? Do they, do they like where they are? Do they feel like they're being well taken care of? That was really important to us, to make sure that the developer was able to do that and that they were going to be a good partner for us and work well with the Housing Authority as well as the town, because this is a, you know, a twenty-four-month process. You know, so it's kind of like finding a, a good partner to make sure that we can work together and achieve our common goal. So, after we have reviewed the responses, we selected the Grantham Group, based out of Marlborough. They, they really hit the nail on the head with bringing our vision to, to life. You know, they, they came up with a thirty-unit plan that was not fifty percent affordable, was not eighty percent affordable, was a hundred percent affordable, and that catered to some of the lowest-income demographics. So, it really fit the, the greatest need that we have and taking care of some of the most vulnerable residents in Situate that we have. They'll also give preference to Situate residents, you know, when it comes to renting. And the, the building really fit very well. And when I introduce Mike from the Grantham Group, he can kind of give you an idea of, of that. But, you know, they really hit the nail on the head, and, you know, I think it's a project that we'll all be very, very proud of. So, Joe, did you want to say something real quick?
Just one minute. I, I told the board when I started this that it was very important that we proceed in a diligence, in a diligent way. I want to say how impressed I've been. I've worked for many different communities and private developers, like, not Mike, but like-minded, friendly competitors, usually up on the other side of the table. And I was working for two communities on the community side, Situate and Hazen, North Dakota through 2015. I lived out there because I needed to do it. It was exciting. But it was easier to work with Steve and communicate while I was in the hinterlands, in a town thirty miles across the cornfields away from everyone else. This is a town of three thousand, just as quaint and cozy as Situate, but it's great to be back. But I'm saying, you have a great board. We can all be proud of it. We followed through with diligence. The members have been, they're builders, software specialists. We have an attorney, John, real estate professional, Steve in mortgage business. Just a great group, and I'm just very pleased. I mean, we can see, we like to say, when the vision gets to a certain point, which we all collaborate. I mean, we had some friendly knock-down, break-out, you know, what the affordability criteria would be. Do we want the highest, lowest, the mix? And Mike will get into more of that. But as Steve said, it was just all wonderful, the thought process. It's basically, I like to tell everyone, it's a jigsaw puzzle. You start with a hundred pieces and all of them are variable. And then you get the site and the road access, and start putting the pieces back in. And as Steve said, then the vision comes through. But the fact that the board was enlightened to, to take advice when it was necessary and to push back against me when they thought my advice needed a little tweaking. It was a wonder, it's been a wonderful experience, and it's great to be back long-term in my home community for life, Situate, by the way, and great to see this happen.
Thank you very much, Joe. Mike Kujara from the Grantham Group.
Hi there. Mike Kujara from the Grantham Group. We are a developer of affordable, we have two divisions. We have enough, we're developing primarily, our business is developing affordable housing for senior citizens. We have two divisions. We have our independent living division, which is sort of in its nascent stage. We also have our affordable assisted living division, which, of which we have six facilities. Another two under, one about to break ground in about two months out in Belcher Town. They're affordable assisted livings. They're all eighty-three units, more or less. And what this affordable assisted living means is that basically it is housing that is targeted towards folks that are spending down their assets and are, by virtue of their income, unable to access traditional expensive $6,000 a month assisted livings. Our assisted livings operate using a lot of different blended subsidy streams. So, we've gotten really good over the course of our organization's twenty-four-year history at understanding how to bring in projects at costs, on budget, and then using blended subsidy streams in order to provide housing for the most vulnerable senior, senior population, monomus, which you'd be surprised. So, I'd like to take you through the proposal that we have here. So, as Steve mentioned, we are looking at developing a project, I don't know where the best position is, but a project that would be thirty units, two stories, a single corridor down the middle. Each unit would be about six hundred and ninety square feet, one bedrooms, walk-in closet, laundry, washer, dryer, dishwasher. But basically, this would be the essential layout. You can see that the design is... So, the essential design, we're trying to draw from a design aesthetic perspective on the adjacent center school, so you can see some of those sort of elements coming up here and here. But the idea is to create a very attractive thirty-unit, you know, multi-family apartment complex. Here's a, just a sort of a rendering of the ground, of the, of the floor plan. As you can see, it's two stories. We come in here, we have a central lobby with a gray room, fireplace, sort of a community space, with an adjacent library off of it. And then on the second floor, we open a little atrium, but there'll also be a recreation room up there, which can also double as a space for visiting nurses or other, you know, podiatrists to kind of come and serve the community. So, basically, the layout is pretty straightforward. One bedroom, kitchen, all contained within here. Bathrooms with a walk-in shower, which is key for this particular population. You know, access, bathtubs are very dangerous, and so we have, you know, walk-in showers. The project would be a hundred percent, obviously, ADA compliant. It would have really high-quality finishes. So, basically, here's a, here's a rendering of the project in the context of the adjacent center school. What we're trying to do is mimic that as best we can, make it fit within the context of the Central Park area here, and obviously to not, not impact the visual aesthetic of the site itself. So, here's just a basic individual unit rendering. As I said before, we have a living room, bedroom, kitchen with a breakfast bar, laundry in the unit, washer, dryer, bathroom, walk-in closet, several closets. So, we have a, and then we're entertaining the idea of, well, the building will be controlled through a, a remote concierge service. We do this with our other facilities. I should tell you a little bit about our, the Grantham Group. We're, we're have about, we're a, we have about five hundred employees. So, we understand property management. You know, being in the assisted living business, we have people on staff twenty-four hours a day providing care. But we also have this twenty-four-hour security that's remote from all of our facilities, so it's monitored, remote. So, we'd be doing a similar thing here. It is independent living, so it's a much, much lower level of care, and the amount of touching on a daily basis that we have with residents or sort of interaction with residents is much more limited. So, we would be probably primarily looking at property management, but we'd also be having, probably likely installing call boxes in these units so as to provide the residents the ability to contact emergency services should they encounter any trouble with that. I'm gonna think of anything else. Is there, so the idea, the, I just want to talk a little bit about the, the project itself. Like Steve mentioned, it's a hundred percent affordable. So, what that means is that all of these units will count towards the town's 40B inventory in perpetuity, as far as we're concerned. That's just sort of part of the mission of the organization. We're going to try to put together a, we would proceed with a friendly 40B process, most likely. So, to work with the Board of Selectmen, work with the planning board to the extent that they have input, and then obviously with the ZBA. But to be able to work with the town to produce the type of project that they would like to see and that would be an asset to the town. A couple of the sort of elements around the project that we anticipate, given this proximity to the library, we anticipate putting a little, you know, crushed stone walking path and maybe some community gardens that sort of tie in visually that area and then allow our residents and the residents of the adjacent Housing Authority property the ability to basically use the amenities of this facility and the library. So, so the way this is financed, it's, it's complicated. Fundamentally, because you have, it's affordable housing. Costs exceed value. You know, what we can charge people to be here is never, ever gonna cost, is never gonna cover the costs of construction. So, we have to basically go to every pot that we possibly can in order to make these things work. So, CPC will be a big component of this project, as will low-income housing tax credits, as will the Mass, Massachusetts Affordable Housing Trust Fund, among other subsidy streams that we're looking at. Home on the federal level, home funding, which Joe is, I'm sure, very familiar with. And any other sort of funds that we basically are able to bring into it. Additionally, as a developer, we're going to be investing in the project as well. So, it's, right now, you know, it's, the construction market's very hot, so we're looking to move as fast as possible because the, the rate of escalation in the construction industry in the metropolitan Boston area is extremely high, but should be happy to know that DHCD doesn't accept, think that Situate is a high-cost community, so we don't get any additional benefit for that. That's Joe. Not a high-cost community, say how. So, anyways, basically, basically, we're, I'm here just looking to, you know, form a partnership with the town, as we, as I have with the Housing Authority, to work with the town to create a product and an asset, a community asset that everyone can be happy with, and that it can serve the town's long-term needs as, as well as its, you know, vulnerable low-income seniors. So, kind of, yes.
The term partnership, we want to make clear that the town or the Housing Authority will have no ownership whatsoever of this property when it's transferred. It'll be transferred through a HUD process called partial release of security, where they promote the release of parcels of under-built sites. So, this is a federally subsidized public housing site now. It has excess land on the back. We make the case according to this handbook, and we'll be working together on that. We've already been invited to go to a meeting where we're ready to HUD. But there's a specific process where HUD promotes the cutting off of parcels. So, there are two things that have to happen to transfer the land to the new developer. One, we need to get the HUD approval. And then, once we have the HUD approval, then we would have to go through the regular town processes to subdivide the parcel for the purpose intended. Once that is done, as Mike and Steve have stressed, the property will have a 40B in-perpetuity restriction, which nobody can get out. It won't happen. A hundred years from now, it will still be restricted. This was tested several years ago in a similarly high-cost area, Wells, where a developer had built twenty years earlier and said, "Now I want to get rid of the poor people and put rich people in a term of condos." And it was lax language twenty years ago. The judge said, "Get out of here. That's never gonna happen." It sends a loud, clear message to the entire industry. The communities can depend upon the state-certified 40B in-perpetuity contract. Because it's a friendly 40B process, we need a vote, which will come later. We'll be requesting a vote, come back again. And when we further along in the process and more detailed information, the deal structure, Mike, will have even tighter than it has now. But we will ask for a vote because we're gonna need a letter. And the letter will say, "The Board of Selectmen has considered this proposal from the Housing Authority Board, and we support it." And we technically assist in that letter. We would provide you with a draft of the letter that we would like the Selectmen to provide. Of course, but your editing will work fine. But we're gonna need that letter. What's different? The friendly 40B process. This is not adversarial for the press or anyone else who's listening. There are too many in my professional opinion. I do not work on adversarial 40B deals. I'm one of the few consultants who go and have spoken against it in the press and on public television. I think it takes away local serenity. That's my professional opinion. That's not what we're dealing with. Here, a local town body, we elected and appointed members, had a vision to enhance the affordable housing of the community, sought expertise, defined that vision, and then determined it was best to find a professional, highly capable, experienced, crack record developer to fulfill the vision. The mistake most communities make is the Housing Authority says, "Yeah, we're developers. We'll do that. We'll hire guys like Joe, and we'll do whatever we want as well." That's not the best way to go. In this case, we're proceeding with a no-risk process. All insurance contracts from start to finish will be in the name of the new owner. We will be providing an option contract to that owner, saying, "We're prepared to transfer the property for $1, subject to you getting all your other funding approvals and such."
That's a great point about that, Joe, as you mentioned that. This is, this is a cooperative effort, as Joe mentioned. And obviously, having the town's support is, is key to that. But larger, within the context of affordable housing development and the current position of DHCD as it relates to development of senior housing, there's a profound preference to develop multifamily, family housing. And so, that's just sort of a public policy thing they have established. However, one way to get it, to encourage, to show, demonstrate to DHCD, the town's commitment to developing affordable housing, is to provide local support. DHCD won't look at any projects without a significant local support component. And CPC will be key, CPC funding will be key to making this deal happen. CPC funding is what makes this deal affordable.
So, go into the actual components. I see $8.2 million or something. How much of that is you borrowing and how much of it is CPC?
Right. So, and I, I can't, without having to figure it straight, you know, off, off the top of my head. So, when we're dealing with affordable rents, you know, and we're charging... So when we're dealing with affordable rents, you know, and we're charging a third of what you could get on the marketplace, your amount of money that you can borrow from the bank is a lot less. So we're going to be looking at, you know, I hazard a guess would probably be, there's probably $2 million in supportable debt, maybe 40, you know, if we get a 40-year amortization period, if we can, are able to stretch that out for as long as possible at a really, really low tax exempt rate, we might be able to get there. But by and large, these projects require lots and lots of equity in order to make them happen because you have to buy down the cost of construction. Because you cannot carry a mortgage with, at low-income rents. It's just, you know, costs exceed the value. Your revenue stream is never going to be sufficient to cover the total cost. So we'll have private investor debt through the sale of low-income housing tax credits. We're going to be looking at federal home funding. And so we're just going to try to blend as many subsidies together as possible, including CPC. And CPC is really critical, would be the difference maker in getting this done.
So what's the expectation of town money?
Well.
CPC only.
It's CPC funding. We're not looking.
No, no, I understand that, but.
Yeah, as far as dollars for that.
$1 million there now, or how much is in there now, a million and a half? How much is in affordable housing for CPC?
The 10%, it's about a million and a half. And then the Affordable Housing Trust, there's about $700,000 that's there. So at the appropriate time, we would be, you know, submitting a joint application to both the Affordable Housing Trust as well as CPC to go in, do a more formal application process with them.
Are you going to bond money and pay it through CPC's future? Is that?
No, they'll be borrowing money through the low-income housing tax credit financing. In addition to that, we would be applying for CPC funds as well as Affordable Housing Trust. Obviously CPC's got to go to town meeting, you know, in order to do that. But what that number does is help to basically make the project affordable.
It's gap financing. So basically, what happens with a tax credit deal is that I go out as a developer and I get tax credits. I don't need to get too much into the weeds. I'm a tax attorney by training, and so I get really boring pretty fast. So please feel free to put your hand up and stop me. But basically, the way you structure these deals is that you create a limited partnership structure and you have a general partner, developer, a limited partner, investor, somebody like Fortune 500 company that has a need for tax credits. As a developer, I don't have a need for tax credits. However, my big altruistic Fortune 500 company has a need for tax credits and also paper losses that could be generated from this project. So they'll come in, they will pay, they'll pay me 90 cents on the dollar for every dollar of the store of tax credit that I can give them. And they use that to offset other income. And they also take paper losses on the project. And then after 15 years, which is what the IRS mandated tax credit period is, the tax credit partnership has collapsed, the investor leaves, the general partner buys out the investor, and you're basically left with affordable housing long-term. So you have these private, you have private equity investing in these projects. That makes up, I would say, in this particular project, a third of the funding. Then you have another fifth of the funding in the form of permanent debt, another fifth that would be in the form of, I think I forgot my fractions, the percentage is all screwed up, but you have additional grant funding, federal home funds. Situate hasn't accessed home in a long time. You're part of a region-wide consortium. You're eligible to receive this federal funding, and we'd be looking to get some of that. In addition, the last component is CPC. That's what makes it happen. So it's a lot of different buckets of money and it's the way you, it's the way you have to finance these. For example, in the town of Concord, Concord has invested interest, they had a large unfriendly 40B project a couple of years ago that came down the pike and so as to head that off at the pass and future, they requested that we come in and develop a project for them. In that case, this town is putting up close to $4 million in order to offset it in the interest of establishing a 40B inventory that is.
From their CPC.
From their CPC funding, correct.
So if your fractions were close, so about a third of the cost will be funding through CPC and through the affordable housing.
I would say. The amount of affordable support would be between $55,000 and $83,000 per unit, which is between 1.65 and 2.4 million.
So between affordable housing and CPC, we've got close to two right now?
Correct.
Both boards need to see the proposals and need to still vote. The process still needs to.
I'm just looking at what the amount of money is that's available.
And what the town gets out of that is, you know, in 40B inventory in perpetuity, also a community asset for your low-income, for your seniors that aren't necessarily, really talking moderate-income folks, the folks that are getting priced out of their houses. We, it's an asset, it's an income-based test, so.
So they're all one-bedroom units?
All one-bedroom units. We're, you know, that's unfortunately the population that we tend to be dealing with here.
So how is it really different from the Central School in terms of services or?
For the Central School, the tenants who live there pay 30% of their adjusted income towards a total rent, or use round numbers. Let's say the official rent is $1,000 and 30% of the tenant's low-income, they have to be earning under 50% of median income to even apply there. And then they pay 30%, but then the Housing Authority sends an invoice to the federal government who pays the rest beneath the $1,000. That's not what we do here. No rental subsidy at the program. It makes it even more important to get a strong local contribution to make this feasible. The tenants who live in will be paying their own rent. Of course, as is legally binding for all types of rental housing in Massachusetts, if someone shows up with a affordable voucher, they meet the rent, if that's such a voucher and they're over 62 and they come in forever, they would qualify. We have a local preference procedures in that category, with Situate first and then only them on the outside. But as Mike and I want to double this, has said, he's only had the strong local contribution. How do we make these?
Yeah, I'm not, I think that's fine. You know, I'm not, and I like the whole project. My question was more the building itself, the structure.
Oh, well, I guess, I'm sorry.
I mean, the actual, that's what Central School is. It's one-bedroom units that look very similar to this. Is that?
So I guess the deal here is that this is in what is a probably 1920s era, 30s era masonry building, wide corridors that I, I've never been inside of it, but I assume it has a original school corridor size. It's probably a profoundly inefficient building because it is masonry.
Yeah, I guess I'm, so did you mention about user? It's the same person's going to live in both.
Correct.
It's a senior that's, it's a senior that is, you know, one-bedroom unit probably that has a living room, a bathroom, a kitchen, and a headroom. That's the same kind of.
So this is, yeah, it's a transitionary living situation.
They can live up to, if they can move in, they earn up to 80%. That's the state 40B cap. And for public housing in Central School, they have to be lower.
And at this point, we have a fairly, fairly long waiting list for people to get into the Housing Authority properties. So there's a need for that and based on the housing plan that Situate has done, that population is only going to get larger. And as that population grows, that waiting list for the units that we presently have is only going to get longer. So these are very similar in size, same kind of market appeal. DHCD actually recommends for senior that they target one-bedrooms because those are easier to rent. So this will help to minimize the waiting list and it'll help as the population demographics shift and as the Situate population ages to help to keep up with that demand.
Sean?
Without a doubt, you'll fill it in a week. We all know people that call us every day looking for exactly this. How many square feet is this building?
So the building itself.
27,000?
Yeah, 27,000 square feet, each floor being $10,000. So each unit's about 690 square feet. So it's a pretty good-sized unit and the layout is really nice.
What did you figure per square foot to construct this new building?
Well, that's absurdly moving target right now. Well, not a moving target, but it, off the top of my head, I'm thinking it was somewhere in 185.
185 to construct this, a square foot?
Development cost on top of that.
Right, right. So that's, I mean, my hard cost is, yeah, probably somewhere in 175. Looking at the market right now, I had to build this out to public assembly standards as to fully.
That's a really good number. Really low, actually.
It's about another $50,000 per year on top of that. Architectural engineering.
So my pure hard cost.
275 a unit, a residential unit. If you take 8 million and divide it by 30.
If you're looking for a total of development cost versus construction cost, I think Mike would be the one. Then that's different. The developer cost includes everyone, engineering, lawyers, everything. And then there's, once all that, it's development tools in place that you buy a contract or a construction.
I mean, you've got to remember, I'm building heavily regulated, to a heavily regulated standard. I, you know, in terms of flexibility, you can see that, you know, as far as we can, we try to build out any amenities that we have. We've got, you know, some lobby space, but we have to meet life safety code. Life safety code is extremely stringent in Massachusetts. Well, one thing we are trying to do with this project is it'll be, you know, LEED certified, you know, it's stretch code. So it'll be an efficient structure, but once you start talking life safety and multifamily or multiple dwelling units, over three units in Massachusetts, you get bumped up into a very, very high. All of my, my fixed costs of developing each unit on the life safety side are very, very high. If I was putting in marble countertops and everything, granite countertops, I wish that's where the money was going, but it is not. It's going into life safety. And that's something you can't get away with. Right now in Massachusetts, Boston is developing affordable housing units at approximately $490,000 per unit. And that's just a reflection of the construction market right now and then also those fixed costs that you cannot get around. You can build a single fam, because you say, "Hey, I can build a single-family house tomorrow on acre-a-land for $250,000, like 6,000 square feet or something like that." You can't do that when you start getting into this stuff.
Residents, these residents will rent or buy? Because I've heard.
This is a rental. It's all rental.
Forever. Never leave the house on a lease.
The way it works is that you enter the tax, the federal tax credit program, you have an initial 15 years of tax credit partnership and then after that you have another 15 years of an extended use affordability period. Functionally, it has to be by law affordable for a minimum of 30 years. However, we, as part of our applications to state, we always say, "Hey, we're doing it in perpetuity. Let's just start committing."
And that was one of the Housing Authority's, you know, stipulations in our RFP were that these were to be affordable in perpetuity.
And we think that that's a fair, an absolutely fair concession to make, given the ask of CPC that we're making.
And land.
You mentioned Concord. Are there any other places closer that you're working on now?
Belchertown.
Well, so we recently are developed, we, so our projects are in Marlboro, Worcester, Appleboro, Mass, North Hampton, Massachusetts, Duane. We run one in Gardner, Mass. We're developing one in conjunction with Mass Development right now in Belchertown. We designated on that two weeks ago and we'll be throwing dirt with the governor on that pretty soon. Closer to home, there is a project that we are working on in a municipality nearby. We're contacted, requested to help on, but I can't go into much more detail than that.
You work with Mass Development a lot? Have you worked with them at like Devens or any of those projects?
No, we, so we, yeah, we've worked with Mass Development on North Hampton, on the old North Hampton State Hospital grounds. Mass Development came and requested that we develop a project on, it's been rebranded as New Urbanist Community, Dense Development. We were the assisted living component and they requested we come in and develop that. They liked it so much, they said, "We do one down here in Belchertown." So we're working with Mass Development in Belchertown as well. So we have great relationships with Mass Development.
They're a great organization.
And potentially, depending upon the way this shakes out, if we look at a 4% tax credit, we'll be working with Mass Development as a bond issuer on the long-term debt for the project. So we have those relations, we have great relationships with Mass Housing. And that DHCD is the, as an assisted living developer, DHCD, we are the only developer that DHCD will fund in the state.
Well, I, I mean, I think I speak for the board when we all support affordable housing for seniors. We know the trend's going in that way. The two things that come to me are, if you have a, you know, if you have a married couple still that wants to be together, I don't think there's a place for them in this, in this design.
Well, do they love each other still? I mean.
After that many years?
Well, unfortunately, generally, this population, it tends to be highly widowed or single. The other thing is that additional space become, if you were to create a den space, that den space, it's been experienced that that can be problematic when achieving the 62.
You don't have to justify it, I'm just saying, that's an observation I made. The other thing is just the price, and you kind of went down that road. For $8.2 million for 30 units is $275,000 a unit for 690 square feet. It just seems like a lot.
Yep.
And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, or I know you've got to put, you know, there's common areas and I know that you've got to get security things in there. I'm just saying, just dollar per foot.
Yeah, it can't be, you know, multifamily development is not, you know, multi, multiple-unit development, you're in a completely different code. And if the, there's a, the National Association of Fire, Fire Code that basically propagates the fire, National Fire Code every year, happens to be, you know, it's a trade association, it's comprised of a lot of folks that manufacture sprinklers and fire alarm systems and so on and so forth, they won't be happy until every single-family house has a sprinkler. And, you know, they're, they like are actually pushing that kind of level of adoption. Unfortunately, they've already succeeded in doing that here.
Those are the two things that come to me. I think it's a great location. I think the design looks nice. I think it fits into the area well, but those are just two things.
We're dealing with Boston construction cost right now. You know, that's where we, where we're at. The Massachusetts School Bill, I mean, I don't, it could probably, you're doing a project in your backyard right here. I don't know what you're looking at a per-square-foot basis, but the Massachusetts School Construction Board Authority has seen exponential costs increase on a per-square-foot basis. They're now, I think one project was recently bid out at $566 a square foot. That's where they're at right now and it's just wild. Very interesting. Yeah.
On the responses to the RFPs that we got back, the per-square-foot construction costs were kind of in the same ballpark, so it may seem expensive, but I mean, that is the going rate to be able to develop something of this caliber, to have it to be ADA compliant and functional for the demographic that we're looking to serve.
Well, and there are no additional management fees for the maintenance and the operations for, right?
Correct, correct. So.
No risk in the development state.
You know, so down the road, this is, this is completely the responsibility of the Grantham Group, not the Housing Authority, not the town. So fixing roofs, dealing with, you know, painting, general maintenance, all of those things are the responsibility of the developers. So when this project is done, we get the benefits of having 30 affordable senior rental units without having to assume the risk of the development, to assume the risk of maintaining and keeping this property online. That's all being done by them and we just reap the benefit of having those units available.
In fact, our Housing Authority director put it just right. She was asked by somebody at one of the meetings, "If I moved in here and I have a maintenance problem that the local maintenance guy isn't helping me with, then Cap, who do I call at your office?" She said, "You don't call my office. You call the property management number on the sign for the developer." This is just like any other privately-owned development. The difference is that this is a regulated, limited distribution project. There are 40B laws for development project that are affordable. There are 40B laws for development product that are affordable, that are reasonable, and they're regulated. And there's an audit, post-audit process that they will have to submit to. Also, these are rentals. So Toby asked a point, I'm sorry, so I tend to.
Give it to Tony, Joe.
Thank you, all right, I'm sure. And asked a point about the lots. And I would, as a professional, I'll say that right in line with current Massachusetts laws. I won't be on a couple of other lines certainly. But with, with a condo, for instance, you'd see, you know, you'd sell something like that for three and a quarter anyway. But we're not selling it. And the only ongoing income in the future, you know, in our business, you say, you never do this for cash flow. There's not going to be any cash flow for years. It's the developer fee at the front end, the money they get, and they deserve it. And they get ongoing property management fees, which are returned regulated by the state. There's a current average, I think, of $68 per year on a month for some kind of management fees. But they're all highly regulated. Part of my business is helping people get through those rates.
So let me just ask a few, hold on, hold on. I've listened to your presentation. I appreciate it. Obviously aesthetically, you hit the nail on the head. It looks great, falls into it, doesn't look like a building. I like the location. It's obviously behind Central School, which is obviously owned by the housing authority. So it's nice centrally located. I like the idea that it's next to the library. Certainly suggests maybe taking the library out of your building because there's no need for a library in a building when you're literally a stone's throw to the largest brand-new building, but it could be used for some other item. I will say that, looking at it, I obviously, hearing that it's 100% affordable is unusual. I've sat through after six years of seven 40Bs and none of which were. And one was friendly, and it's always refreshing to have somebody come in and under a friendly 40B to be able to address towns' needs and do so in the manner of which you're looking. Your demographics look great if that's what you're going for. Obviously, you know, the one thing that sits with me is if the Grantham Group goes belly up and bankrupts, then there are issues. They're going to become a problem. But obviously, you know, we're not here to take a look at that standpoint. But I will say that, you know, it looks like a very good project potentially. There will probably be some competition, I would anticipate, with any type of community preservation act monies because of other interests that are always looking for their needs. But clearly, from the affordable standpoint, we've actually bankrolled 10% for the past eight years. I think it's about a million, I thought, is what I thought was bankrolled. But whatever it may be, it's there, and with the Affordable Housing Trust, it's a need that the town needs to address. I have to say, it's refreshing to see that you're looking for 100%, because I think that's great. And, you know, obviously, I think the next question I have is then, where do we go from here? From our board's perspective, you're looking for the information, you're looking, you're still in that kind of preliminary stage, you know, as to what you're looking for. This is a presentation to see what you can do.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the goal of this meeting was, was just to bring the board and as well as the town up to speed with all the work that has been going on behind the scenes and how we, you know, got to where we are right now. Obviously, we'll have meetings, you know, with the butters and, you know, open meetings to, you know, answer questions, you know, with residents, neighbors and things like that. We'll be going before all the appropriate boards. You know, we'll also be going before the Affordable Housing Trust, before the CPC to get their input into, you know, make the proposal there to get approval for what's needed to complete the project there. And then we'll forward to town meetings. So there's a lot of necessary steps to take to get the project moving forward. This is the first one, just to kind of let everyone know. I think it's a fantastic project that.
And there's no cupola?
There's no cupola.
Those cupolas are expensive.
I think they are. They can deteriorate, so I like that.
You know, the fact, you know, as you point out, that it is 100% affordable is not by accident. That was something that was really a sticking point with our board to, to make sure that this was really serving the need that we wanted and giving the town the most bang for the buck when we do go and approach CPC for, you know, for the affordable housing money, so that, that money is making the most impact that we can in order to help the people that need it the most.
So from my perspective, some of the next steps is that, you know, this land currently is controlled by HUD. So we have to go ask the Mother Bay I to HUD to subdivide the lot so that we can have site control. But during that process, we anticipate being able to concurrently approach town department heads, discuss, you know, sewer water hookups, things of that sort, and, you know, get some feedback from obviously the fire department. They love to see, you know, circular roads. We don't, our preference is obviously to keep as far away from, you know, preserve as much green space as possible. But the fire department always loves turning arounds. So those kinds of conversations, well, we, we're going to have with the town departments in conjunction with the housing authority. So we'll be going and having those conversations and just getting their feedback and soliciting their input. And then basically, you know, as Stephen mentioned, approaching the CPC and talking about that as things gel on the, on the financing front, we'll be back for you and then also for the process.
Just one last question. So you say you're going to CPC. What are you asking CPC for?
The money.
Well, there's already a million and a half or $2 million.
Yeah, but we still need to file a formal application with the CPC. They need to have hearings, open meetings with that. And, you know, they need to vote. It's up to CPC.
So you're asking for the money that's already been allocated. You have money in the affordable.
Correct, correct.
Correct.
And you have money that's already allocated in the affordable housing?
They do.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not allocated. So that's, that's the point that needs to be clarified. That's their process that they're going to start going through. They need to put their application into CPC. They need to put their application into the Affordable Housing Trust.
That's what Tony's saying. He's saying allocated money that came from CPC, that's at the affordable.
Correct. But the Affordable Housing Trust Board needs to make that decision and that vote, as well as CPC's independent vote.
And that helps when we go to DHCD and we ask for them to say, hey, we've got this much of a commitment. It may not all be already in the currently allocated sum, but if there's a forward commitment that's being made or an allocation in the future to be made, that helps our case significantly.
So you're saying you're going to tie the hands of future town meetings for those funds through CPC? Or you're just going to take the balance?
Not any different than what we do today.
Are you going to take the balance now, or are you going to, you know?
Are you going to ask for our future funds?
Well, he has to come back with a number first. They don't have that number.
When we have a number put together, we would go and file an application with both the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust. And based on the amount of money that is, is in CPC between the unrestricted fund as well as what's specifically allocated to the affordable housing money, there's, there's sufficient funds within that CPC.
The unrestricted funds are what we're talking about here. So are you going after the unrestricted funds, or are you going after the funds that are allocated for affordable housing? So we need to know, how much money are you asking CPC for?
He doesn't know. He doesn't know.
Well, that's what we need to know. I mean, at some point, you've got to say, we hope to bear O2. We're going to get this from here. We're going to get from there. We're going to get this from there.
Yeah.
Until that, because the unrestricted funds, there's other uses for that as well potentially. So if you're going in and taking the $2 million that we've already put aside for affordable housing and the $2 million that's sitting in affordable unrestricted, then there, then there could be an issue.
Yeah, the total amount that would be needed for the project is between 1.65 and 2.4. So it's nowhere approaching, you know, encompassing all of the money that's there. So, you know, if you look at all the money based on the 10% that, you know, would have been allocated to the affordable housing over the years, it's, it's, you know, between a million, million and a half, somewhere in that. So basically, what this project would be looking to, you know, to do is utilize that money there. You know, and I think it's important to, you know, to note the disparity in what's been spent in open space, you know, versus affordable housing, which, you know, we know is virtually nil. You know, where about $6.5 million has been spent for open land purchase in situates. So, you know, at some point, if the town is not holding up that 10% end for the affordable housing, then I think there might be an issue, you know, with the state looking at, well, gee, why not? You know, so we're not looking to crowd out other projects that are going on. What we're looking to do is make sure that that amount that should be going to affordable housing, that we have a viable project that we can present to CPC and say, hey, here's something that is a fantastic project that can help to achieve that 10% goal and get us to where we need to be and serve a much-needed segment of the population.
Well said.
Great. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a discussion, vote on some one-day wine and malt licenses.
Motion?
Yep. Please.
Hold on.
Shula Water Selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartending for a birthday party taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on 9/9/16, starting at 4:30 PM and ending at 8:30 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the Water Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartending for a meet and greet taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on 9/23/2016, starting at 5:30 PM and ending at 9:00 PM?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the Water Selectmen vote to approve one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartending for an annual meeting taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on 9/25/16, starting at 1:00 PM and ending at 4:00 PM?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the Water Selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Ella McKenzie for a rehearsal dinner taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on 9/16, starting at 6:00 PM and ending at 10:00 PM?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the Water Selectmen vote to approve one-day wine and malt license for Ella McKenzie for a birthday party taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on 9/18, starting at 4:00 PM and ending at 8:00 PM?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, move the Water Selectmen to vote to approve one-day malt license to tailor-made bartending for a wedding celebration taking place at the Citro Maritime Center on September 24, 2016, starting at 2 and ending at 8:00 PM?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote on municipal employee disclosure.
Good evening.
Nancy. Good morning.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's almost morning.
Sorry, I didn't know if I was moving ahead too quickly. As Recreation Director Mara Clancy brought before you before the start of the summer season, there were some positions that were advertised that municipal employees also applied for. And that is an ethics violation without a vote of the board to provide a 20B exemption. She does have another position for a wrestling coach, and that was also one that she would like to fill with a town employee that has applied for it, and that's what's before you this evening. And I was just looking for the last one.
Can you explain that again? I don't know what you just said.
Sure, no, absolutely. So under the state's ethics rules, you can't hold two positions within a municipality. You have two masters. So you have to have one or the other. There are special municipal employees. This doesn't qualify as one because you would have to work less than 500 hours. There aren't that many that really do qualify. So these are people, usually it's in the summer where you have a teacher or some other, like an aide that works during the school year, but also wants to take advantage of working with the same student population in the recreation programs. It's always been an issue. We just haven't really been dealing with it. And we're, after our IRS payroll audit this year, where we had other issues with the IRS payroll audit of some of these people being 1099 people as well as W2s. We wanted to get it completely rectified, not only on the IRS reporting and the proper withholding, but also on the state ethics rules. So that's what it is, is a 20B exemption that the Board of Selectmen can vote to provide that exemption, that this person could hold two different positions, as long as they're not working for the same supervisor and for the same department. And it's well within the board's rights to say, no, we don't want to do this. There's enough of a, of a deep pool. You should be able to find someone else, go out and do more due diligence.
So is that the same as a special municipal employee?
No, it's completely different. It's a different exemption under the statute. We had lots of instances of this in the past, and as Nancy said, the audit showed that we needed to tighten up the paperwork and have the board vote the disclosure. I can't remember the other one we did. It was another coach, I think, working or something like that.
It very well could be. This is actually the example they give on the state ethics website of what you're not supposed to do, which is to have teachers working in recreation programs. And of course, we all know, every municipality in the world has teachers working in recreation programs because it just makes sense.
Yeah.
Because they're good coaches or they're good teachers.
Yeah, and they know the community.
Right, and it works great for us.
They're interested in working with.
So every one of the people will come before us in the future where we have to say it's okay?
And usually, they'll come in a group like when we're going through a major programs for the summer. That's when you're going to see a lot of them. Through the year, we really didn't expect to see that many.
What about a teacher that coaches the baseball team?
We'd have to see if it's part of, if it's a position that's stipended underneath the contract, it's fine. So there's pages of other duties that someone can hold.
What about a DBW worker that's a hockey coach?
Same thing. If it's not underneath their, their operating contract, that would need, yeah, they'd have to have an exemption.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen, as required by Massachusetts General Log, Chapter 268A, we have reviewed the disclosure form from Mr. Brian Robinson, a municipal employee who seeks to provide personal services to the situat recreation department. The exemption under Section 20B is approved for Brian Robinson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, just a note, especially after what Mr. Vignani said. If any of the collective bargaining agreements add these positions in as positions that can be held by these people, then we no longer have to require a 20B exemption because it would be allowable underneath our collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Discussion of the special town meeting?
Move the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for October 19, 2016, special town meeting.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran.
9:55.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you had a list in your packet of the tentative warrant articles subject to Nancy and I reviewing more today or more being received by the deadline at noon today. What I just gave you is the list that we have. I believe there's 12 on it right now. So you vote, you'll have the draft warrant at your next meeting and the selected background information. But this is what, and some of these, obviously, it's tentative because they're at your discretion. Others of them are not. So I don't, do you want me just quickly go through them or?
Sure.
So the reason we've called the meeting is for the theme of flood maps adoption. The board was advised that we can ask the town meeting to approve the town's purchase of the Doherty Acquisition parcel on Zero Edward Foster Road, the Torrey's Lane, we discussed tonight and hopefully we'll decide at your meeting on September 20. There's two grant cash match programs, one from Seaport Advisory for something that's been on the capital plan for a number of years. It's for a piling and stone system at the marina. And this will fund engineering permitting replacement and some of the floats replacement as necessary. The grant will be for $560,500 from Seaport Economic Council. Our cash match is $140,500, but we already have available $50,000 from a prior town meeting authorization for this project back in 2013, I think.
Is that coming from Waterways?
Yep, it's in the Waterways capital plan, and it's already been appropriated by town meeting, so the balance would be that. And then we have what Mr. Banger talked about tonight, which would be getting from 30 to 60% design of the reservoir. The grant would go in and our cash match of that would be $38,400. I rounded up to $39,000. There's also some in-kind services to the tune of about $4,100. High school gym foyer should be familiar to board members. You deferred this from the recommended appropriation of it for the annual town meeting because the school was being worked on. That work is all complete, and now the foyer is ready to be done for $150,000.
Where's that coming from?
That is coming from free cash probably, and some surplus funds in what I will get to in the next article. to in the next article, which is the Cushing Field well.
One second. So, that's not coming from stabilization? That's coming from free cash?
Yes. That would, we haven't
Or some.
Looked at it, but that would be our intent. We don't know the free cash amount yet. Cushing Field School well, I think the board members are familiar with this. The irrigation well needs to go into the new field because it can't tap into the water system. The cost to drill and permit and put that in is $150,000. Those funds are available because the appropriation for the Cushing and Heatherly roofs came in much lower than anticipated, and so, we are able to transfer $180,000 of that to not only do a $150,000 well project, but also have $30,000 to go towards the high school gym foyer. I met with the school superintendent, and he is supportive of both of those transfers in these projects.
Is this a special kind of well? Because I know it's like 10 grand to dig a well.
This is an irrigation well for the entire fields. It's a special well.
Can that be used? Do we have any knowledge? Can that be used over at the high school, given that it's Cushing right next to it? You know, the baseball field's there.
Depends where it's drilled, if it's somewhere in between.
You can ask. I believe it's already been designed, but I'm not sure on that. We don't believe we have any FY17 budget balancing, and I don't think we have any unpaid bills, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. So, two things, no unpaid bills, and it occurred to me when I was writing this today, this will be the first special town meeting we've had in five or six years that we haven't had to take free cash off the top and put back into stabilization for storm mitigation. So...
Yeah, why does yours say that?
Because we'll need it to build a new reservoir, I think, or something. We have the design plan in place for the new path at Jenkins School. That's $100,000. It's already been designed. The Green Bush proposal, that would be the sale of land.
Was that 100 grand just for the design?
No, the design is complete. That's construction.
This is construction.
We paid for that out of our engineering services, and the AAB has to approve the design, but I don't think that would be a problem. Green Bush proposal, this is for the board to present to town meeting the sale of land for the Green Bush proposal that you discussed. And one of the things Nancy and I are talking about, we have to look at the fine print. The governor's municipal modernization bill allows towns to establish a revolving fund now for paying engine duty claims as opposed to funding them straight out of salary. It would be like being self-insured for workers' compensation. I'm not sure that's going to go on, but we just put it there. And then, the last one, we have one petition article, and that is for taking the remaining school property that's on the Ellis land and putting it back into conservation. And that's what we have so far.
CPC projects?
Oh, CPC. One of the things, I think, in general is whether or not, it's a policy issue, but thank you, I just wanted to bring it up in the context of special town meeting, and whether or not it makes sense, right, for the past, as long as I remember, and I don't know, maybe before, there's always been a hard and fast rule that we pretty much do CPC at special, at the annual town meeting with one or two exceptions. And then, in terms of project flow, or planning, or just the workload of the CPC committee to have to review 26 or 17 projects, if it might make sense to fund some at special town meetings, not only in the fall, but also in the special before the annual, because when we fund annual town meeting, people can't access those funds till July 1. So, maybe some spring projects could get ready to go, or conversely, if you prove it in the fall, then those construction projects theoretically be ready to go as soon as March, April, spring came. So, that's something, again, that's a policy issue for the board. I think it has a lot of merit, and we would probably put it as a formal agenda item for you discuss later, and I know the CPC chair has raised that. So, that's it for town meeting stuff.
And next meeting, we'll go over all these?
Oh, sorry, John. The well is for Cushing and the high school.
It is.
Nancy found the original email. Thank you.
So, discussion, next discussion vote on the health insurance quote?
Oh, okay.
IA?
Okay, so, as you know, we've discussed the fact that both the town and our employees received a 15% increase.
I'm going to recuse myself on this discussion, so I'll step off the board while you guys discuss this. All right?
We received a 15% increase in our health insurance in FY17.
1.5, right? 15?
15%. That was about a $700,000 increase to the town budget at the expense of many other items, and also because, on average, the town contribution rate is 53% to 47%. It hits our employees equally as high. We anticipate that at a minimum, the health insurance increase for FY18 will be at least 15%, probably more in the 20% to 23%. That's due to a variety of factors, mostly since there were very, very low health insurance increases, and the surplus was, the surplus in the reserve fund was being used to subsidize rates, and that's finally come home, and the actual rates now have to be passed on to the subscribers. We've been concerned about this for a year or two and have been meeting with other towns to share our concern with the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. We've also met with our Insurance Advisory Committee members two weeks ago. We have another meeting tomorrow at 4:00, and another meeting scheduled September 20 to share our concerns about where we think Mayflower is headed. As part of that, we were able to obtain from Mayflower our utilization data for our subscribers and their dependents using our health insurance plan. The utilization data shows a profile of Citro in terms of its health insurance costs, prescription costs, catastrophic losses where stop-loss insurance kicks in, and we've gotten that utilization data to see how we compare with the rest of the Mayflower group in terms of costs. What we've done with that data is we've asked Fallon, Tufts, and Blue Cross to give us a quote on the exact same plan design that we have now that we offer to employees at town, and we're very clear about this at the Insurance Advisory Committee meeting. We have no intention of changing the current benefits that we offer to employees, so we've asked Fallon and Tufts and Blue Cross to quote the exact same plans that we offer to our employees right now to see what those would cost, because clearly, we know we're getting probably a 20% increase with Mayflower. The other thing that concerns us about with Mayflower is that if they have a deficit in their surplus, the town is responsible for a portion of that deficit. And that way Nancy and I have looked, and some of the other towns projected, we anticipate they may be in a deficit situation in FY18, and so, that's kind of concerning to us as well. So, we wanted to get a quote from MYA, which is the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, but unlike the other three insurance companies where we did this five years ago, we went and just got quotes to see what it costs to provide the exact same plans as we have under their plans, and MYA is requesting that before they give us a quote, and before they, they have our utilization data already, but before they actually quote us on the plan designs that mirror our own, they just want the Board of Selectmen to vote to ask MYA to give us that quote. And it's fairly unusual. Cook &amp; Company hasn't seen it before. Some other towns haven't made the quote request yet, but they were told that they, their boards have to get a vote as well. So, what we'll do when we get all these quotes is we'll take them back in partnership with the IAC and just give them the data, and, you know, they're our partner in this in terms of how we go further. I will tell you this evening that the town of Rockland Board of Selectmen voted to leave Mayflower. We have to give notice to Mayflower by December 31 of this year if we do not plan to be with them for FY18. So, that's why there's a lot of stuff going on, and we're meeting with the Insurance Advisory Committees and looking for their input and how we get through this. $700,000 is a lot out of our budget, and it's even harder on the employees. So, we want to make sure we've done our due diligence to look at what kind of options are out there that are available because we don't see this changing, and it's very likely, and that's why we want to get the quotes, because if we think Mayflower's at 20%, but MYA, or Blue Cross, or Fallon come at, and they're 26, 27, then, you know, the Insurance Advisory Committee and us can make informed decisions about where we want to go. Prelimarily, MYA thought just cursory, we might be about 22% to quote. Our experience is not the worst in Mayflower, but it's not the best, so we have to look at our utilization data to see that's going to affect the quotes that we have. On average, we tend to have older employees, are active to retirees, is almost, is pretty close to each other. Other communities have different census data, but we're looking to see if we can form joint purchases, if there's opening to that, but a lot, you know, right now, we're just getting the quotes, sharing with the IAC, and see what's available to us on the design that we have now. We're not changing anything. We just want to see what it costs in the rest of the world in terms of what Mayflower's offering. So, that's all that you're doing tonight, is just voting to ask MYA to give us a quote on what we offer now.
John, you have a question?
I think you just answered at the end. So, I don't know what you call it, but I'm going to call it, for lack of a better word, loss runs.
Yeah.
So, well, for example, if Blue Cross Blue Shield looks at our loss runs from the past year or two, and we look real good, or do they ask? Or is it just MYA that's asking?
That, no, that's all the utilization data. What happens is Mayflower gives us a report of all our hospitalizations, prescription, and ever, and that we give that composite to the insurance companies, and they, you know, they rate it and whatever, and say, "Based on this, and based on the plans that you want us to mirror, you know, this is what your rates would be." Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they do their homework.
So, two things. Are these quotes going in just on behalf of Citro, our utilization, or are we joining with other towns?
No, we're not doing anything with other towns. We're just doing it on our own, because the other thing, too, is even if we wanted to look at exploring other opportunities, we have to discuss it with the Insurance Advisory Committee, and also, they, you know, they would want to marry us, you know? So, you know, they would look at our utilization data, we would look at theirs, and would see if it makes. I mean, the theory with joining a joint purchase, which Mayflower is, it has 37 units, is that you spread the risk. But one of the challenges we've had is we're the third biggest subscriber in Mayflower after Hingham and Marshfield, and they have a one-vote, one-unit principle, so there's a unit in there with, I believe, one or one member? One or three members, and they have the same weight as we do. So, we're concerned not only about, you know, affordability and fairness, but also the governance there.
I mean, the only one thing I want to reiterate is that not only do you have the increase in the rates, but you also have the exposure to deficit, so...
That's the most troubling thing, is all Tony.
The other thing I recommend is that you talk to Neighborhood Health Plan.
Yeah, we can get, yeah.
They're, they are very aggressive. What's that?
Aggressive?
Well, we just did these initially, and we asked the Advisory Committee at the meeting, like, we didn't ask GIC, because when we did the plan redesign five years ago, nobody wanted to do GIC, so I just didn't do that, but we're going to talk about that tomorrow. It'll take a month to get the quotes before we have that. But the thing is, is that in rough terms, Mayflower had a $33 million surplus two years ago. This 15% increase that the town and employees got this past year, they used another $8 million of the surplus to subsidize it. So, their own financial policies say they must maintain a 10% balance in their reserve fund. They've gone below their own, they're not in compliance with their own financial policies. So, those are some of the things we're really concerned about.
They're in trouble, basically.
They're, they're in trouble. But again, you know, we don't, we're in the information gathering mode right now, and that's why we've scheduled sort of IAC meetings every two weeks, because as we get this information in, we want to share it with them, and they're the users of the health insurance. So, so again, this is just a vote to ask MYA to quote us on what we offer now.
So, I'm just going to reiterate what you said, just to sum it up real quick.
Yeah.
So, basically, if they go belly up, way down, they've, they've got a deficit, a huge deficit, let's say for some crazy number, it's $30 million as of next year, we own a good part of it.
We own a portion of that.
On top of whatever our rates may be, we also own that debt.
Yes, so we have the subsidized rate, the incurred but not reported, what, you know, the, to make up what they did last year, and then, the actual, you know, whatever the claims experience is this year. When the surplus was 33 million, I think, two years ago, I asked, it was three years ago, I asked Cook &amp; Company, who's our third-party administrator, to go and get quotes from other carries, just to see where we were compared to those, and also, if we were to leave, we would ostensibly leave our share of that surplus on the table, even though we don't get the surplus if you leave. You're responsible for a deficit, but you don't get the surplus if you leave. And at that time, our proportion was about 7 million of that 3 million, but now, they've bled through it, so that's why we've had these conversations now, well, you know, what's compelling us to stay if we can get this, you know, maintain the same level of healthcare benefits for us that we have now. So, but there's a lot of work still to be done, and before we can make any decisions whatsoever.
Motion?
Yeah, please.
Move to obtain a quote for health insurance from Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Any, any, yeah, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Mr. Danahy recused himself. Okay, now, we're going to move on to discussion, no, no, it's a vote of some board and committee appointments.
Move to appoint Larry Isit LuNet?
LuNet.
To the Public Building Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Michelle Murphy to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint John Bo...
Miki.
Miki to the Water Resource Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we have got a discussion and a vote for Drain Layers License for renewal for Cobra Enterprises.
Do you have the election poll workers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to appoint Dorothy O. C. Brown, 71 Jericho Road, Elizabeth F. Watson at 1,000 Glades Road, Kathleen Joyce at 25 Oceanfront Street, and Eleanor Hayes, 35 Penfield Road as election poll workers for 2016 and 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't know there was 1,000 Glades Road.
I, is that, can we check on that?
It's not 1,000 Glades Road.
I don't think the numbers go up that high in Glades Road.
No, they don't.
Yeah, that's what Kathy did.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no way they go to 1,000.
No way. I know most of the houses down there.
Probably 100.
Right.
I'll check it right now.
All right, now, discussion vote of the Drain Layers License Renewal Cobra Enterprises.
Move to approve a renewal of the Drain Layers License to Cobra Enterprise.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have approval of some meeting minutes?
On second, move to approve the meeting minutes of August 16, 2016.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it just a one?
Executive.
That's all I have.
Yeah, just only one, right? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
Other business?
Oh. So, I guess I'm trying to catch up for lost time here.
All right, so I'll go first. I got a whole bunch. So, I want to start off by saying... say, I took a look at the first, shall we say, section of bylaws, and after reviewing them and trying to make some revisions and trying to stay consistent with kind of the philosophy and the intent of the Waterways Committee, it just became abundantly clear that instead of trying to do this in a piecemeal fashion, it would be more prudent for the town, and in particular for us as a whole, to take a look at all the rules, all the regs, because there are some things, when you look at bylaws and you start out, they've been promulgated, they've been passed, and then all of a sudden you begin to amend them or revise them, and then, you know, add more, and then take different sections. It's gotten to the point where it's been revised so many times that there are certain things that are in the wrong sections, and I don't mean it was done intentionally, just maybe to have a definitional section, they had some definitions at the beginning, and they had them down further, and then being consistent. Sometimes when you're talking about a specific, in this case, say, a mooring or mooring space, it's best to be consistent throughout the bylaws. You could see that in time, maybe they added the word "mooring space." Bylaws were originally written with the intent of moorings. So all of a sudden, you go through it, and you're kind of like, wait a minute, why, why do all of a sudden we change our verbiage? So after talking with the harbor master, and also I've talked to the chairman, and suggesting that maybe the prudent thing, along with town administrator, why don't we have a, more of a comprehensive review of all of them at once instead of trying to do a piecemeal? So, that's the reason why that wasn't on our agenda tonight, and I know that it's not going to be on the waterways, but we've indicated, you know, that we're going to get this taken care of in the next 12 months. Second thing I wanted to say was, obviously, coming up on Sunday, I know the PSICO, which is the Situate Cohasset Football Program, is having a commemoration on behalf of the 15th anniversary of September 11th, and they're going to be doing that at the Situate Football Field. All the board members here, town, anybody in TV who's watching this, you're invited. It's 11 o'clock at the football field. They're going to have a short commemoration with a speech. They'll have an honor guard from the fire department, the police, and then they're going to hopefully have the infirling of maybe, I think it's Doug, or not Doug, Steve Litchfield, or Franny Litchfield, Mr. Litchfield's flag. It's a gigantic flag across the field, and so if you, if you want to go down, by all means, please participate in the commemoration of that sad day. The third thing I wanted to say is that, at least in my neck of the woods, there was a great parade. It happened to be the Situate Beach Association Labor Day Parade. It's the oldest parade in town. It's been going on since like 1929, and it's based upon people participating, putting in a float. You never know who shows up, and I have to say, for those people who were there, I hope you enjoyed it. It was a beautiful day. The one thing that I was commented by a woman, Mrs. Joyce, down in Humrock, was, first she said, "I didn't think any selectmen were at this," and I said, "Well, you're wrong. I've been doing it for five years." But also, she said, "I'd love to see somebody down in the Parade of Horribles," which happens to be on Saturday. So I said, "You know what? Next year I'll be there. Maybe some of the other board members would like to go participate in Saturday, because it, too, is another great parade that we have in Situate that some people don't realize, but it's in Humrock." The next thing I was going to suggest is, please bear in mind that school is open, you know, kids are so apt to run out and run and get into the streets. Just be prepared to slow down. Try not to think that you have to get to work quickly. It's usually this time of year where things happen, so I just suggest to people, have some patience when you're heading to the high school, but also, you know, when you're driving around your neighborhood, around the bus time, please be careful. The last thing I wanted to say to the board is that I've been remiss to raise this, because some of our meetings have kind of gone later in the evening, and I've gotten tired, and I've completely forgot about it, but I wanted to say that, you know, for those people who are watching, if you haven't seen or read the news, we as a town are very fortunate. We have had an individual who, I'm not sure if he was actually born here, but he certainly was raised here, went through the high school, played football, came back and coached, he's raised his family here. We're very fortunate to have him as a Superior Court Judge. He was a part of the Assistant District Attorney's Office, and now he is a part of the Supreme Judicial Court as a justice. That is Frank Gaziano, and, you know, I think, as a board, we should probably send a letter and say, "Congratulations," because, you know what? That is no small feat. I mean, he is a part of a seven-member board adjudicating and making case law here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the SJC, or the Supreme Judicial Court, is known throughout the country as being one of the top 10, I think it's actually top 5, because they do create new law. They've been doing that for over 100 years. So, I think it's a great thing, I mean, some people might say Chief Justice Cushing. Well, maybe one day we'll be saying Chief Justice Gaziano, and I want to congratulate him, his family, and I think it would be appropriate for the board if they would consider that we do a letter to him and his family, just say congratulations.
Good idea.
Aside from that, that's it.
No history lessons tonight. Thank you.
I was trying to think, well, I did give you one. The oldest parade in town.
You did.
You know, 1929.
No, I don't, I don't have anything to say, other than reiterate the school stuff and reiterate, everyone just please conserving water and take those extra steps. Turn the water when you brush your teeth, turn the water when you brush your teeth, and, you know, it's going to be, this isn't just going to end in a couple of weeks. This is seasons that it's going to take to replenish this stuff, so every little step counts.
More?
I have nothing.
Huh?
Nope.
I don't really have anything, but I do want to reiterate this, the speeds. We have a lot of road construction going on. We've got school buses out there now, and, I mean, today I saw two close calls, and people really need to slow down. And the police are doing what they can do, but the speed is just, it's got to be curbed. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.